Has been made available. You guys are welcome to examine. Can you still hear me? Okay, so that was the, that's the nuts and bolts behind how and why we formed our offer the way we did. As I said, I welcome any questions regarding the County Highway E project and we do look, look forward to working with you and getting this project completed and getting this section of County Highway upgraded. We aren't getting any audio on the Zoom call, so I hope I'm not missing any questions.
Okay, we're gonna try it again, Robbie. Sorry about that. We're trying again.
I'll make a motion that we accept the offer from the St. Croix County for the towns right away at the intersection of E and V.
There is second.
Second, Chris Marshall Supervisor for.
And Liz, that was Rick Colbitt that did the first part of the motion. Any other discussion regarding it? All those in favor say aye. Thank you so much, Robbie.
Thank you so much, and we'll report back when we get a little closer and more report on the overall project. I appreciate you guys' time this evening.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve the temporary Class B beer license for the Redeemer Lutheran Church. That's also in your drive. Anyone want to pick that up?
Make the motion to issue a temporary Class B beer license for Redeemer Lutheran Church at 1097 Scott Road, Chris Marshall Supervisor for.
Second.
Second.
Second, Darla Myers Supervisor one.
Any other discussion regarding it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The passes? These two, Jennifer Benner and Robert Murphy, are you here? One of you here tonight?
Yeah.
Do you guys want to come over to the microphone?
Just right here, good. I can go there if you like.
I can go there. Get you on tape.
You mind if I go there first or you like? Sorry.
Both of these people applied last month for their operator licenses. They had them in the past. The board chose not to approve them, and they're both here to speak to us tonight. And you are Robert Murphy. You're looking for a two-year license, and you're working at Bob and Steve BP.
That is correct.
Okay, and would you just like, how many years have you had the license?
Well, I've been there at least six years, I would say. I've had a license to serve the whole time. The reason I, I mean, I don't know why it was denied. There are some OWYs on my record from ten to seven years ago. That, so it might have looked bad on the application. However, this, this was a renewal that I had applied for after six years of serving. I, I'm not sure why it was turned down.
It wasn't turned down. The board did not take action.
Oh, I'm sorry for wording there.
That's okay. Just don't need to take the license.
Sure, I, I would love to just ask what I need to do to get that acted upon and reinstated to keep my job.
What are you going to?
I'd take any questions if there's.
Yeah, anyone has any questions for me?
Make the motion to approve the license for Robert Murphy at Bob and Steve BP.
For some two years.
For two years.
Second, anyone want to second it?
Supervisor Colbitt, second.
Any other discussion over this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. We'll send it out to you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you are Jennifer Benner. That's correct. You're looking for a one-year license. You're working big guys. Correct. I don't know if any of the board wants to speak to her or as to why you did not approve that one? Or if you'd like to see why you approved that. I don't know. I've been serving there for over a year, then serving people for about twenty jobs.
Chris Marshall Supervisor for, I made the motion for operator's license for one year for Jennifer Benner, big guys.
There is a second.
Supervisor Colbitt, I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Thank you for coming in. We'll get that out to you next week. Thank you very much. The City of Stillwater fireworks permit application that is coming in for, I believe it's August fourteenth. It's, they delayed this year not doing an important joint weekend because they're doing the grand opening for the trail and the whole project. That's why they have a different date on fireworks. And we have always opposed it because it happens on our side of the river, on land in the City of Stillwater. What's we have mentioned?
Chris Marshall Supervisor for, for the City of Stillwater fireworks permit application.
There is a second.
Derosier, second, and asked that it be amended to state the date of August fourteen, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. I said the right date. It doesn't have to be amended. I just said the wrong date. And they normally don't pay this fee like everyone else does because it's a municipality initiative here, so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that passes. And then the last thing on my quick agenda here is Arbor Hill. We don't have anything on them. Operator, do you want to take a look please?
We're aware of.
Nothing has started yet, okay? I'm keeping it on here so I don't lose track. And this goes forwards, so we're on track on this one. So that is why it's on there. The next one is the Second Amendment resolution that was brought back to the board by the board. There is this folder just so board is aware. Either in there except what is stapled to the spreadsheet. I just want to open it up to the board so they're aware. This spreadsheet was done at one o'clock today. It has eighty-one plus people's names on it. It shows you the date they made the contact with us by email and whether they were for or against, and whether they were residents or unknown. And there are some totals at the bottom, and then the last page is attached to that for what I have on between my email and first email after I got back here at four o'clock today. I think there might be one or two that I forwarded to you when I sat down here tonight. And there is still maybe another number or two on there, but they came in so late here, I wasn't able to process them. So I'm just letting you know that that's what is here. The, Wisconsin Towns Association was very clear to me that we do not have to take comments from anybody on this. You know, we had a pretty long comment here as it is, and that we can separate people in this hall so we know who's from our town and who's not from our town. As long as you're all in the same room, that doesn't matter. So as a matter of record, I am willing to read this resolution in if the board wants to, to have it ready for record. Oh, yes, okay. This is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen. It's the resolution of the Town Board Supervisors supporting residents to stick constitutional rights under the Second Amendment, whereas constitution of the U.S. is the supreme law of our nation, and whereas the right of people to keep and bear arms is guaranteed as an individual right of the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which reads, "The well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Under the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, Article One, Section Twenty-five, which reads, "The people have the right to keep and bear arms for security, defense, hunting, recreation, or any other lawful purpose." And whereas the U.S. Supreme Court in District of Columbia versus Heller, five five forty U.S., five seventy, two thousand and eight, "Affirming an individual's right to possess firearms unconnected with service and or lack for traditionally lawful purposes such as..." Whereas the U.S. Supreme Court of McDonald versus Chicago, five sixty-one, U.S. seven forty-two, ten, "Affirming that the right of an individual to keep and bear arms is protected, and the Second Amendment is incorporated by the Chief Process Clause of the Department of State." And whereas the people of the town of St. Joseph's, the St. Croix County, Wisconsin derive an economic benefit from all safe marks of firearms that creation had to do with shooting conducted in the town of St. Joseph's, St. Croix County using all types of firearms, although within the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and whereas the town of St. Joseph's Board of Supervisors being elected to represent the people of the town of St. Joseph and being duly warned, sworn by the rule of office to uphold the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of Wisconsin, and whereas the town of St. Joseph's Board of Supervisors is concerned about the passage of any bill containing language which could be interpreted as infringing the right of citizens of the town of St. Joseph's to keep and bear arms. And whereas the town of St. Joseph's Board of Supervisors wishes to express deep resentment to the rights of all citizens of the town of St. Joseph's to keep and bear arms. And whereas the town of St. Joseph's Board of Supervisors wishes to express opposition to any law that would unconstruce the right of the town of St. Joseph's to keep and bear arms, and whereas the State Assembly, the Wisconsin State Assembly, the Wisconsin State Senate being elected by the people of the State of Wisconsin, legally sworn by the rule of office, to hold the U.S. Constitution and the and whereas any legislation by the Wisconsin State Legislature that would one, infringe upon the right to keep and bear arms, and two, would ban constitutionally protective possession and or any weapons including firearms, magazines, ammunition, or body armor for defensive, like liberty in the property under Second Amendment, would ban possession for the purpose of hunting or other lawful recreations, or would require a firearm owner ID card, or would tax the possession of firearms or ammunition, or five, would require the registration and or confiscation of said weapons and ammunition within the town of St. Joseph's, St. Croix County, Wisconsin, would be considered a violation of the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and Article One, twenty, Section Twenty-five of the Wisconsin Constitution. That was one paragraph, excuse me. Now therefore, based upon a foregoing recital, the town of St. Joseph's Board of Supervisors issues the following resolution. It is all that the town of St. Joseph's Board of Supervisors declares its intent and policy to preserve its residents' rights under the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and Article One, Section Twenty-five of the Wisconsin Constitution. It will resolve the town of St. Joseph's Board of Supervisors, affirmative support of St. Croix County Sheriff to exercise sound discretion, not to enforce against any citizen and unconstitutional law. And if further resolved, the town of St. Joseph's Board of Supervisors, who policies an accident of any legislation that would infringe upon the rights of people to keep and bear arms. So that is, copy of that. Now it is up to the board as to whether we're going to take any comments, or are we just going to move forward with action on this? What does the board wish to be? We don't have to take comments. We're not required to. That's been made very clear to us by our attorney and by the WTA, so.
I'd like to hear comments.
I'd like to hear less than one hour of comments.
Always.
Well, we'll start off with Danielle Zener, thirteen seventy-four Fox River.
Just, just before you do, I did not hear from more, is to let you mind your comments.
I will read just sound and just.
And are we going to put a time limit on it? Are we going to allow this one minute? Are we going to allow this an hour? Or are we going to do?
Two minutes a person and no more than an hour.
Are you comfortable with that? Are we going to hear from residents or from everybody?
I'd like to hear from residents first and see where our hour ends up.
Okay. So just so we're clear, it is twelve minutes to seven. Who's going to run the stopwatch? I can follow them. You're going to run the stopwatch?
I'll watch.
You're going to watch it? Okay. Okay, so first piece of paper you were handed?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Danielle Zener. I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse for thirty-five years. I've also been a gun owner since I was twelve years old. I'm a hunter.
Excuse me, I'm just going to interrupt you. You have to address the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you hear what I said? So I don't have to do that?
Okay. You have to address.
I love hunting. I love guns. I want safety in guns because I know what guns can do to a human being. I think this is a clearly partisan divisive resolution. As a citizen of the United States and therefore protect the guns with rights granted by the Constitution, I reject this effort and submit that openly announcing this town's willingness to ignore any gun law that a partisan base deserves is unconstitutional. A law that has been passed by federal or state governments intended to protect my life, my liberty, my freedom, my pursuit of happiness is unconstitutional. No man or woman is above the law, and that includes you and the St. Croix County Sheriff and their deputies. Sherriff's are elected and hired to protect and serve the people of St. Croix County, not to interpret the constitutionality of the laws. I think it's ridiculous that we're even having this at this moment in time because we have a constitution. We have the Second Amendment. I'm all for it. We don't need to do this extra crap that allows unraveled people to carry guns and injure innocent people. That, that's who gets injured in these gun fights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Give another one.
Marion Shaw, seventeen twenty-six, Iowa twelve.
Well, Marion obviously is not a resident. Unless you moved.
Thomas Humphrey, five three one Pertslake Road.
Uh, Madam Chair, Board members, my name is Thomas Humphrey, head of the five thirty-one Pertslake Road. We're here tonight to voice our opinions on a very important resolution that would make St. Joseph Township the sanctuary city for citizens' constitutional right to keep and bear arms. There has never been a more important time in history for this, as many of our constitutional rights are under attack, specifically the First and Second Amendments. When voicing for our support or opposition for this resolution, I'd like you to consider the following facts. The cities of Chicago and New York are a perfect example of the current situation, and both of these cities, the right to keep and bear arms is tightly controlled, yet gun control and gun violence runs rampant. CNN reports that the Fourth of July weekend saw, by one hundred and twenty-nine shootings and twenty fatalities through gun violence. And these cities have very stringent gun laws. So far this year, gun violence incidents in New York has spiked almost thirty percent over twenty twenty, the seven hundred and seventy-three shootings. In Chicago, two thousand and nineteen people have been shot, and three hundred and sixty-four people have been killed this year. You may think these facts support gun control, but they do not, and here's why. The people who shoot other people, unless it is in self-defense, are criminals. They don't care about the law. Think about what carries a heavier penalty, possession of an illegal firearm or shooting someone. If someone's going to a criminal intent to shoot someone, they could give a rip about violating a gun possession law. The only people that these types of laws affect are people who care about not violating the law. These gun control laws have zero impact on people with criminal intent. That's why we call them criminals. Just like fentanyl or any other illegal or controlled substance, there will be a market for illegal guns, and people who stop at the law will get their hands on weapons. Gun control laws will be banned. The only people without guns will be the law-abiding citizens who want to defend themselves. Second Amendment supporters are not asking everyone to go out and buy a gun. We are only asking that our right under the Constitution to keep and bear arms be respected so that those of us who want a firearm to protect ourselves continue to have that right. And this resolution supports that thought process. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Cruz, eleven seventy, Sundance Pass.
Hello and good afternoon. I'm also one of the citizens and residents of the town of St. Joseph who sent an email to all the town board members. This resolution should not even be proposed to the town board. It's outside the scope of this institution and what it represents and the capacity in which we're designed to serve, or you are designed to serve for us as citizens. This is something that should be handled at a state level and a federal level to which the Constitution already serves. So my understanding is this is a unnecessary resolution, nor is it an enforceable one by any institution that this body has the ability to instruct or direct. So I would ask that this not move forward here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anton Ray.
Anton Ray, Residence four sixty-five, Highland View. I have to agree with Justin that this is not really a resolution that belongs at the town level. Gun laws are at the state level and the federal level. The town has no authority to inadversary revoke the enforcement of any of these. I understand reading this new resolution that it looks like it's at least probably legal in the sense that we're no longer saying that we are inadversary just saying laws don't apply here. But it is divisive. It has no effect. There's no legal effect with this. There is not really any effect other than trying to divide the community. And that just seems, that's not the top of the board. The top of the board should be, A, to govern the town, and B, to bring the community together as a community. Thanks.
Mike Myers, ten ninety-eight Golden Oaks.
Madam Chair, Supervisors. I'd like to remind everybody here that this type of a resolution is not at all unprecedented to be dealt with and to be considered at a town level. There are many, many towns in Wisconsin and around the country that have passed these types of resolutions. Also, many counties that have passed these types of Second Amendment sanctuary resolutions, so it is definitely within the purview of your roles as supervisors to consider this. Secondly, the resolution is to send a message up to the other branches, to the county, to the sheriff, to the other towns and cities, to the state. What position of people in this town are, is, or on the subject of Second Amendment, being supportive of and enforcing and keeping it from being infringed. It is clearly, unless your head's in the sand, under attack. There, you know, we, we can all see in the news. Our constitutional rights are, are being tested around the COVID situation and certainly around the Second Amendment. I would urge you to to consider the notion that there's very many people, a lot of them here, who support the Second Amendment and this resolution. Not necessarily all of them sending emails. So I would, I would welcome you to consider the, the broad public, your constituents, when you make a decision on these matters. It's a very important thing that we deal with now.
Thank you.
If we send a message. Thank you.
To Curtis. Eleven oh one thirty-seventh Street.
I'm speaking to you tonight, as I have before, in the letters that I sent you to oppose this resolution. This resolution was not on in our community. It's done a lot of damage already, a lot of division. Because of townships approved, this resolution does not make it right. Must do what's best for our community. I would rather see resolutions that protect our groundwater, protect our pollinators, and protect our environment rather than something that's already protected in the Constitution.
Anyone else? Anyone online from the town of St. Joseph that wishes to speak? You can unmute yourself and introduce yourself. They can't.
Then I'll fix it for you.
Or else you're going to, no one's going to talk. Okay. I don't see anyone coming online. Any, any call again from anyone in the town? Wants to speak?
Can we chat quickly, speaker?
Thank you for saying that. Anyone else?
I have one more comment. I spoke earlier.
Yes, you can come up and say again, because I know I stopped you from speaking to this. Do you just introduce your name and address again, just for record?
My name is Lester Weber, from eight seventy-seven, one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, New Richmond. I'm in the northeast corner of our district. The only thing I wanted to add is if this moves forward in any manner, I would strongly suggest that it gets put on a voting referendum. This is for the people to vote on, not for a few to make a decision for the majority. Know what your jobs are, but this is a very important matter. And I really feel if it moves forward, it should go to a vote. Town of St. Joseph's. That's who it concerns.
Anyone else in the town? Always. You are being spoken to. You have to wait. I'm sorry.
Right, go.
We go by first, 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 come first order, and around the second time, you have to wait until the first, because they're all on the way. The lady behind you had her hand up. You want to hear that?
Hello, I'm Jim. I live at three eighty-five Cairo Beach, Fulton, Wisconsin. I am against the Second Amendment Sanctuary. I have no problem with the Constitution and what it stands for. But I think that it really sends a very unwelcoming message to people who might want to move into this area unless they're really for this sort of thing. But for people that are kind of on the fence or are concerned about their safety, I've done some reading about guns and how most of the research does not support gun, having guns to defend oneself from, from violence ends up coming in bad situation. And I just feel the biggest thing that I'm concerned about is that it just sends a very unwelcoming message, and I agree that this should be something that is voted on by all of the people in the township rather than just decided by a few.
Anyone else in the town? Yes, sir.
Can you up the mouth, bind for us, old guys in town here? I'm really impressed with.
I second that.
Bring your mouths right up to the mic. Eat this one.
Anyone else in the town wish to speak? Anyone else in the town wish to speak? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak?
I want to speak, but I, I don't have a pen, so.
Well, there was one back there on the counter.
No, no.
Drop it. You can go out right there and hand it to Chris.
Sure.
Have to write what I'm saying. So Aaron Guzman, twelve eighty-three, eighty-ninth Street, relatively new to St. Joe. I just want to say that seems to me like we're looking at this a little bit backwards. Like, we're looking at it as saying that we're not going to obey any laws coming down from the top. When our laws are infringed on, they do come from the top. And so this is saying to us, ours, our elected constituents, that you are a last line of defense if something wrong is coming our direction. And I want to also clarify that the sheriff has a sole responsibility to decide the constitutionality, what the federal government is telling him what to do. You have to look at this like a bullseye. We're, we're here asking you people that represent us at higher levels to really represent all of us instead of thinking that we're trying to change how the Constitution's viewed. We're asking you to stand in the way of anybody that wants to infringe on it. This is your chance to stand in front of all of your constituents and say to them, we will, honor our oath, the same one I did, ten years, to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States as a whole. That includes the First, Second, and everything in. That includes the First, Second, and everything inside of it. And that's really what this is about. We don't really worry about the Fifth Amendment too much, and that is under attack right now. The Second Amendment, the First Amendment, those things are under attack. Individual freedoms are under attack. And it comes from the top down through mandates. Cool little word, but that's how it happens. So that's what we're really asking you to do is to say, look, we're going to stand up for you when the, when the rubber meets the road, we're going to be there for you. That's what, this is what this is all about. It isn't about, we're going to ignore the federal government. We're going to hold them to the one human document that protects all of us, which is the Constitution of the United States. That's what I have to say about it.
No happy and no amendments, you're out the door. This is the form. Say it again. This is not a public hearing. There's a lot speaking out on that one, and I'm just going to continue. If that happens, the sheriff will escort you out. This is a town board meeting. This is not a rally. Understand that. We're going to have a piece of decorum here no matter what. Chris?
So we have one comment form from Baldwin, President.
We also have one with the town of Hudson. So let me ask once more online. Is there anyone online from the town of St. Joseph that wishes to speak?
Yeah, this, this is Tim Texan. I'd like to say a word or two.
Tim, would you please give your address?
Sure. My address is 481 Nelson Farm Lane. Earlier today, I submitted a letter on behalf of myself and two other residents in my neighborhood. One a longtime business owner and another a longtime resident. And our point of view really is kind of summarized by the last speaker. What we're really concerned about is that this is going to send a message that individuals can decide the constitutionality of federal and state laws. It's essentially an invitation to vigilanteism. That's not the way our government is set up. It's the, it's the judicial branch that decides whether or not a law is constitutional. Okay, the, the sheriff and, and law enforcement is charged with executing and enforcing the laws, not deciding constitutionality. And we shouldn't be sending that message, especially at a time like this, when people might misinterpret it and think they can violate state or federal laws because of this town resolution. So I think this is a really dangerous thing. I think it's a horrible signal to those outside of the community who might consider living here, visiting here, or even investing in this township. Many of us are concerned about how this might affect our property values, how the, the overall brand of the town as a peaceful and beautiful place is viewed. So we strongly oppose this, and we really hope you'll take these points of view into consideration. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else online that wishes to speak? Anyone else in the room from the town of St. Joseph that wishes to speak? Yes, sir. We'll let you have your second round.
All right.
You get one minute.
Thank you. Well, it'll take less than that. You know, I, I heard many people object to this resolution on the fact that, you know, kind of box against potential laws that are coming down the line. But you look at what happens with sanctuary cities, right? Where illegal immigration law is scoffed at lower levels of government successfully. And I'm not saying that two wrongs make a right. However, for sure, it does appear to be the new normal. And so for that reason, I think that, you know, this is just a carbon copy of the illegal immigration sanctuary city. There's a Second Amendment Sanctuary as well. And I think that to be fair to both sides, this should go forward based off of that.
Anyone else from the town? All right, Chris.
Scott Miller, 2136 110 Baldwin.
And you have another one there while we're waiting for you to press through. There he is. I remember you coming on over and trying to get your place while he's speaking. Go ahead.
All right, Scott Miller, Baldwin. Appreciate the time. As I, I talked the first meeting and whatnot, and when I, when I talked, this is purely symbolic. And what we're, what we as St. Craig County residents and St. Joe's residents are asking for you guys to have our back on the Second Amendment. Because if you can't have it now, show leadership that can behind your second amendment. A Second Amendment now, you won't do it when the federal and state government are doing wonky business. And I, and I mentioned then that you guys should take a look at Sheriff Mack's case. One of the points that was made online. If there is a federal or state law that comes down to us here in St. Craig County that is, goes against the Constitution, our sheriff will hopefully stand up for us. Because he can. If it's unconstitutional, he can stop it. The whole case with Sheriff Mack was all about an unconstitutional law that came down from the federal government. And he stood up as a sheriff and said, this is not going to happen. And seven other sheriffs joined him and they won. So this is really symbolic. We shouldn't have to do this. We're all wasting our time. But our federal government is a train wreck. And if you don't realize that, you're part of the train wreck. And we need you guys to represent us. Put down, say, St. Joe's, St. Craig County is going to stand for the Second Amendment. And that sends a message to our sheriff, our political officers, elected officials, that if they don't stand for the Second Amendment, that they don't deserve to represent us. Thanks for your time.
You have Marion Shaw.
Yes, Marion Shaw, 726 Highway 12.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I was going to read a letter that I sent to all of you this afternoon. If you've had a chance to read it, great. I think it would be important that everybody got to read that. So I would, I would invite anybody here that's listening to request that as an open record. And it really points to what is going on here, what your responsibility and duty is. There's a lot of feelings and emotion in this room, and there's a lot of conjecture in the room. A lot of what I heard so far speaking at this microphone has been unfounded and without truth. It's been a lot of feelings and emotion. That's not what we operate under. You operate under an oath with a duty to your taxpayers. This is not a government building. This is the people's building. And statutes are not laws. The Constitution is the law. No law, whether passed at this level or the state level, trumps the law, which is the Constitution. And yes, the sheriff is the primary responsible enforcer for that law. So really what's taking place here is that we're nipping different pieces of the Supreme Law based on emotion and conjecture. And what people are tired of is it being picked apart to pieces. And I'll give an example, because it was mentioned here earlier, what your duty is. Your duty is to fulfill your oath. This is a set of silverware. It happens to be plastic. This is a set of keys. This is a cell phone. And this is a bullet. Which does the most damage in this country? And I'll let you choose which of those, because I can tell you, number one in the country is this fork and knife. Number two are the car keys. This probably follows close behind. But the one that trails everything is this one, because this one only kills emotions that people have. Somebody has to use this wrong, and then they'll die. Somebody needs to use this wrong or they'll die. And somebody will use the phone wrong or they'll die. This can be used wrong as well. So why isn't this fork doing its duty and banning these first, banning these second, and banning this third? That's what the problem is with what's going on here. You can't have the first, the second, the third, the fourth, the fifth, the tenth, or the twenty-third without the second. And that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Are you, Chris?
Lynn Benzold. 706 159th Street, Robert.
Good evening. I can speak from outside of your community. I would just like to remind the board, a lot was occurring last summer, last May. Riots in Minneapolis, chaos, buildings burning. My friends near Smelling Boulevard with a minivan ready to escape the city. Even us out here across the river thinking, are these rioters going to come into our community? Have we forgotten that my friend's husband was on the front porch doing duty. But there's 22, this girl shooting. And and do we recall that the mayor of Minneapolis was deep hunting the police, the people who we are trusting to protect us? If our police, if that happened then, who is to say that could happen again? Create a very unsafe situation for all of us. And if we're left defenseless, where does that leave us as citizens? I'd like to, how did we bring peace to the community? How did that come to be? We had to become peacemakers. And that was a show of force by the National Guard, by the police, stopping the riots through a show of force. And once that happened, it stopped. And now we can be in the mode of peacekeepers. And maybe we have forgotten the peacemaking part or how we keep maintaining the peace. How do we keep it? I'm just asking, pleading this board to please be proactive, be an example to your community, be an example to the county. We can go further from here. We can make a statement to the rest, like the other gentleman said. Bring the statement up, the authority, the chain. We, we know you. You're our neighbors. I'm not a neighbor with the governor. I'm a neighbor with you guys in the same county. We're trusting you. You've been voted in, just like my board as well. I hope you will do and see this from that perspective, of the bigger picture of how peace came to our.
Anyone else, Chris?
John Craft, 1067 80th.
You're a resident here, sir.
Robert.
Great. Thanks for taking the time, giving the opportunity to speak. So I just want to follow up on a couple of points that Marion made. First of all, this should be a slam dunk, no rarer. Every single one of you has already taken this oath. Every single one of you has taken the oath of office, uphold the Constitution, and includes the Second Amendment. So this resolution is nothing more than a simple reaffirming of that. So the second thing is, this is really designed to be a test for all of us across the county, not just in this township, to see who of our local elected officials are going to vote against it. When election time rolls around next time, we know who to target. A lot of silent majority here tonight. Most of these folks have spoken in the last meetings. We just want to see how you vote. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else, Chris? No more? Anyone else in the room wish to speak? Yes, if you draw a forum. You have to go back and get one. Do you want to ask if anyone online wishes to speak? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak?
This is Jenna Brown, Rolling Hills Trail in St. Joseph's.
Go ahead, Jenna.
Hey, I just want to echo John's sentiments and agree with him wholeheartedly that this isn't about anything other than really how you'll, how you'll protect our Second Amendment. And it's, that's really how you'll vote. And they kind of taking a proactive approach should something come down from federal or state levels, which we know could happen. So to me, it's very simple. It's a, it's a simple act of what you'll do for us and how you'll, how you'll act and behave as it relates to our, our Second Amendment rights. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone come up to my side?
Janet.
Hi, I'm Janet Levin, 487 Hoover Drive, President. Mostly, I would just like to say thank you. You guys are wonderful. I appreciate the time and the dunks that you have to deal with. And I'm sorry you have to deal with this at all, but thank you.
Dan Gavin. 555 Perch Lake Road.
Thank you for this time to speak. I am a grandma raising grandchildren in St. Joseph's Township. I raise four children here. This is my home. These are the people that we elected to represent us here on the council or the town board. And I would just like to ask you to please do the right thing and deny this. We do not need this. We have the Constitution as it stands. It's very strong. The Second Amendment will not change. I firmly believe that. But what can change is the atmosphere in our town is past. We are living in a time where there is a lot of dissension among us Americans. This is not helpful. My grandchildren need to grow up in a place that's peaceful, that doesn't have these kinds of meetings where we have people from outside of our community coming and trying to influence our elected officials. That is my firm belief that we have a, that we have a really big job here. We have a job here tonight to deny this. Whatever you call a Second Amendment resolution, we do. You have the big responsibility to say no. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir? Yes, you can speak again. No one else has your hand up? Give a second chance. No others?
No others.
My name is Justin Cruz. I've already spoken tonight, town resident. What I wanted to emphasize is something that's been said here is that this is a resolution that has been quoted as being symbolic. So the, so the people who are coming here and saying that this is to defend, it is not enforceable at this level. Meaning that the board that our government is paying for is wasting the time, because this is not of any use at this component. We have no police force. We have no ability to enforce this. What sparked this is troubling, but as a symbolic gesture, it is meaningless, because it will not stop any changes from a state or federal level. The Constitution has upheld for many years. I don't see that changing in any specific way. And what I don't understand is this is not a law, and it is not enforceable. This is a symbolic gesture that is meaningless and wasteful to the town of St. Joseph. And for those of us who pay a lot of taxes to stay here, thank you.
Anyone else? Chris, you have anyone else over there?
Oh, yeah.
Is the board comfortable going to board discussion now? Okay. We will go to board discussion, the comments by the public now end, and there will be no more. So we will go to board discussion regarding that Second Amendment resolution. Anyone want to begin?
I have to turn to you if you want to start.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll start. I want to thank everyone for coming here. It's my whole deal. If you want, if you're part of this town and you have an issue or a passion, you should come to the meeting. Don't just tell a supervisor when you're passing him on your own. This, this is great. Fantastic. I believe, for me, I think Jan said it. We are responsible. I'm, I'm not here to voice what Rick thinks, what Rick knows, what Rick feels. I, I represent the whole town. And from what I've received from the people that have sent me stuff. that have sent me stuff and who are here tonight, even though it goes against what I actually feel is going to happen, I don't believe there's enough awareness or information out here to understand this resolution. And until that time, I can't be in favor. But I do, I do believe there will be a time.
There was, I'd like to just bring up a comment that was brought up, and I don't have a public record of it, but in, in order to truly represent each and every one of them, every one of you, because as one vote, none of us sitting here tonight is going to get that privilege. So if this is what you really believe, and you want to spend the tax money to do it, this would be a referendum item, and if that were to happen, each and every one of you would get your say, would get your vote when it came to the polls. And I do feel, I think there's, that probably says it all, and we need to acknowledge that that is truly our, our, our number one voice. I have read, I, let me assure you, every single one of your letters that were submitted. Some of them I read twice because both the chair and our clerk's office forwarded every single one that they received also. So if we were copied on them all, we received them twice, if, if that's how you addressed your letter. We've all heard all about the things I'm going to say. And I assure you, I too support the Second Amendment. I, I too support the Constitution. I support your rights to open carry, conceal and carry, gun ownership, and arsenal of bullets to go with it, shooting red squirrels out of dining room window, your gun sitting on the kitchen counter with the bullets behind the radio. Everyone was quick to tell me whether they had ammunition, guns, where they, where they were at on conceal and carry, and I am very, very confident that if we need to have weapons to defend ourselves in an act of violence, we're in a very good position to do that in this community. So that being said, I'm going to go back to my same thing that I, I am going to say a referendum is the only true support, and if that's the route you want to go, it's going to come out of the tax coffers, and when that happens, that money comes out of the road budget, it's going to come out of our fire department budget, it's going to come out of the park budget, because it has to come from someplace. And this is the reality of the position and the place that I sit in today. And again, I thank all of you for taking time to come here tonight, and because in fact that you are so inspired to do so, there's many, many things that are done on a daily basis by volunteers, and there are far too few volunteers to get the job done. So again, thanks to all of you tonight.
Do you want to say anything?
Well, thank you all for coming. I just wanted to start by quoting some news articles from just this past week. In an unprecedented move that is sure to be challenged in court by gun rights advocates, city leaders in San Jose voted Tuesday to require legal gun owners in the city to pay taxpayers for the public costs incurred by criminal gun violence that would require every gun owner to buy liability insurance coverage for their firearms, and to pay a fee to compensate taxpayers for the emergency medical and police responses to gun-related injuries and deaths. San Jose is a local government municipality just like ours. Some are claiming we will have legal liability if we pass this resolution. That's like saying we will have legal liability for taking an oath to the Constitution. Maybe there should be legal liability for not upholding our oaths to the Constitution. As of June 20th, there are 1,930 counties protected by Second Amendment Sanctuary legislation at either the state or county level, representing 61% of 3,141 counties and county equivalents in all 50 states and the District of Columbia. Over half of the counties in this country felt their intervention was necessary to protect Second Amendment rights. This is why it is so important for our residents to know where our board stands with respect to Second Amendment rights. Without the Second Amendment, we won't have the rest of the Bill of Rights, especially the First Amendment. The following Wisconsin counties have passed some type of, type of Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution: Lafayette, Wood, Dodge, Grant, Sawyer, Washington, Marquette, Waukesha, Oneida, Monroe, Langley, Vileus, Russ, Washburn, Florence, and Pope. And the Second Amendment Sanctuary Movement is just getting started. Our goal is to have St. Croix County added to this list. The Town of St. Joseph Board of Supervisors passes resolutions routinely. Passing this resolution will send a message to our county and state legislators that we support their efforts to protect the Second Amendment. Resolutions do not carry legal weight, but they do send a message to whatever or whomever the resolution is addressing. Nothing would change in our town except the assurance that our board would not pass something like San Jose did just last week. Are we sending an unwelcome message, I sure hope so, to the bad guys? As an elected supervisor, I have a duty to bring forth residents' concerns. They have a right to air grievances without fear or retribution or censorship. This is not a frivolous waste of time. Our St. Croix County Sheriff, through his chief deputy, has stated, "If the Town of St. Joseph wishes to pass or accept this resolution, the sheriff has no objections." Madam Chair asked me at the last board meeting if I would accept the attorney changes to the Town of Baldwin Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution that was passed, and my answer is yes. I moved to approve the Town of St. Joseph Resolution 2021-14, a resolution of the Town Board of Supervisors supporting residents' constitutional rights under the Second Amendment.
Is there a second?
I, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Liz, just so you know, he, Ricola seconded that motion.
How was that a motion? You didn't call for it?
She made a motion.
I want to know if, if she's just accepting the attorney's revision of our, the resolution we had last month, or if you're asking us to make
Well, then, you need clarification, so you thought you were approving them.
Whoa, let's back the bus up, you weren't here.
I was here on June 10th, June 8th.
You thought you were approving the changes.
That's what I thought she was saying.
What was your motion? Was your motion for approval of the resolution as it is?
As the attorney drafted it, the one that's titled 2021-14.
So do you want to keep your second, or do you want to withdraw it?
I'll withdraw it, I understand what she's asking.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? For lack of second, that motion dies. I will, in a moment, if you don't mind, to just make a comment on this, so that everyone else on the board has a chance. I'm approaching this today from a different point of view. I'm not approaching it from gun rights or gun control. I informed those of you who were here before that I come from a gun-only family, and I'm probably one of the few people in here who has experienced murder by gun in my family. It was a double murder, and it happened quickly with guns in the house. There wasn't a chance to stop it. So I've seen both sides of this issue, but it doesn't matter that I have, because as a chair of this board, I want you to be aware that this is really outside of our wheelhouse. According to the Wisconsin Towns Association website, "Town officials must apply common sense leadership and practical solutions to everyday local situations without politics. Because dangerous actions and partisan shit that can envelop bigger and more bureaucratic government." We're the beginning, we're the lowest part of your government, and we're the local control. Unlike organizations of cities and villages, towns are unincorporated and can only implement those functions that are specifically authorized to us by state law. Towns administer elections, they conduct property tax assessment, they dispute, handle dispute procedures, billing, collection, secure fire protection, manual experiments provide for recycling program, maintain town roads. They can also provide additional services as garbage collection, land use management, zoning, and economic development, and law enforcement. Most importantly, local rules and procedures cannot conflict with state law. Creating and approving this resolution by this board is an overreach on our part. If we approve this, what is the next political issue to come before us that we will be asked to weigh in, that is outside of our designated purview? There's multiple emails that were sent to the board. It was overwhelmingly two to one against this resolution. Our residents have weighed in, and I personally see no value in going to a referendum on this because it would only be advisory and, this resolution may not mean anything, it has no weight, it has no enforceability. What it does do, and what I feel very strongly about, is it is divisive, and it has divided our town, and can destroy it in the future, and that is what it is doing to us, and I for one will not support it just because this is not where I believe this board should be. So that's my comments. I will turn it back to the board. Is anyone going to make a further motion on this?
Chris Marshall, Supervisor 4. I make a motion to table the Second Amendment Resolution. Definitely.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
That was Lori DeRozier, Liz. Sorry. Is there any discussion regarding tabling it indefinitely? Yes, sir?
Does tabling it mean it can be put on the agenda every month, and we can have 60 people, 70 people here come? What?
Table is done.
Indefinitely means it's done.
Someone could put it, okay.
It goes away, it's out there, it can't be brought back. If you table for the next meeting or table for six months, if you put a time limit, then it has to come back. Indefinitely is not allowed to come back.
Ever?
Ever.
Ever, ever?
Well, not in this form. Any other discussion regarding the motion in a second? Liz, would you like to do a roll call vote, please? Rick?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Darla?
No.
Motion carried. That is all we will have on that subject tonight. I would ask the board to do a recess for 10 minutes while we clear the room. I'll make a motion to recess for 10 minutes. All of the members, aye?
Aye.
I wanted to thank you for speaking up.
Thank you.
We don't want you to be like, ready. All these people are looking, ready, look what's happening in the room. You're going to have your Don't have this.
Yes.
Centralized location. To the south here, we have the two to five year toddler location. So some of the features that are included in here include sculptural climbable elements, a leaf tunnel here and some various other features. And this is intended to have poured in place rubberized surface as part of the base bid package. Surrounding that, we would have footpath connections via flagstone steppers. And then landscaping that would be installed by others at a future date. The five to 12 playground area is kind of in this darker gray solid hatch area. We have a net climber spinner, a play equipment piece kind of located here. And then this is a feature that is essentially kind of like a balance beam that is a wave action here. So this portion of the project is included in the base bid. So basically these three pieces of equipment and the surfacing around them, as well as this concrete ribbon around it. Unfortunately, based on the budget, the swing set and swing set surfacing needs to be considered for an alternate bid or a future project. The outfall here for the stormwater pipe, as I understand it, is installed. And if this rain garden basin has not yet been installed, it will be installed shortly. We're also proposing that there'd be some stone steppers where kiddos or people could cross, you know, through the rain garden area, but be high and dry through there. And that there'd be some rain guarded plantings with some outcropping stone speckled throughout. Right now, the planting is not included as part of that base bid, but the concrete or sorry, excuse me, outcropping stone and decorative pieces are included. You'll see here in this lighter hatched area, this path that takes you to the hillside play components. So this has been further developed. And as I understand it, the park committee has selected their components. So that's what's being reflected here with the slide and various other elements. This is all a future project. This does not come in under the current base bid. And then we also had heard a desire to have better access to the existing vault laboratories. So we're proposing a path here, but that is also in a bid alternate condition. So I'm going to pop on over to this color coded diagram, which I think better illustrates what is being included in the base bid, what is being considered an alternate bid, and what is a future project entirely. So you can kind of see here in the green, everything that's included in the green as far as surfacing, equipment, any associated removals, grading and restoration work will all be included as part of this basement. Anything that is in yellow are items that we want the contractor to bid on. But we get to determine once we get the bids back whether or not we think we can include those based on our budget. So those are wish list items that we may or may not be able to afford depending on how bids come in. And then based on our budget and understanding of how some of these pieces of equipment, well, how much they will cost, we have this hillside play as a completely future project that needs to be further designed, vetted and bid out in a different time. So those items are in red there. We did also provide an updated cost estimate for these. I wanted to point out that due to the pandemic, we are experiencing unprecedented increases in material costs, in labor, in lead times for equipment. And we have seen bids come in 50% over our estimated opinion of probable cost. So we did put a 50% contingency in here that is obviously worst case scenario, but we don't want you guys to have any surprises. So the base bid condition here, we understand your budget is around 180,000. There's some things that we can do to fine tune this number to make sure that the total comes in at 180,000, but that is without the contingency. So I just wanted to point that out. Alternate bid items are kind of listed in here as described earlier. And then the future phase items also listed here. I don't know that I need to go in a ton of detail, but there are some future items that have not yet been designed by the parks committee that will need to be reexamined at a later date. So this is the update that I wanted to provide everybody. Are there any questions?
Sarah, I would like to ask you a question regarding that contingency. I know that I, I work for a builder and I know personal close family that was building houses this year and found out that what they were going to build this summer, they are saving an exorbitant amount of money by waiting for winter into that. You know, is that something that we should be considering rather than trying to push this through this year yet? Because of that high number that you're talking about?
Sure. Yeah, that's one. Yeah, that's definitely one option. And I know Lee is in the room and can speak to this as well. But there is a chance that we could hit the sweet spot where a contractor maybe is in between jobs. And since this is a smaller project, we could potentially get more competitive pricing if we bid it out now. But it is always possible that we would get better prices at a later time. Now, we can put it out to bid and see what we get back. And if the bids are too high, we can pause on the project and bid it out at a later date. So that is also an option as well. Lee, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add to that.
I would agree with what you said.
Okay.
Anyone else on the board have any questions regarding this plan? Did you want to add anything, Nina? Because I know you attended tonight.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Are you going to be Sarah? You're going to have to go to the microphones if she's going to hear you.
Kind of can kind of hear you, Nina.
I can kind of hear you. Yes, I can see you. Can you hear me now? Okay, my question is, I'm sad to hear that the swing set is not included that we were planning to have it in there. Is there an option, is there a possibility that instead of the ramp to the bathroom, that is postponed? And we, we can include then in this case, the swing set? Or can we use the old swing set, install it there and just add the surface? And on the later stage, we exchange it. I don't like to use the old swing set, but kids like a swing set. So coming here, not having a swing set, I don't know. I don't feel very comfortable about that.
Sure, Nina. So the, the concrete path around the restroom is also an alternate. That is not included in the base bid. If you can see the screen here, the items in green are the ones that are included in the base bid.
Yeah.
So, you know, we could look at, you know, potentially not doing poured in place surfacing in the toddler area. And you might be able to free up enough funds to pay for the swing set. And then I should mention also that the base bid is poured in place surfacing only for the two to five. And then the rest of it is the engineered wood fiber.
How much would be the cost only for the swing set and the engineered fiber for that area?
I would have to go and look at the detailed cost estimate. I don't have that off the top of my head right now. Um, hold on.
While she's looking, I just want to interject. While she's looking for that, that engineered wood fiber is great and everything. But I can tell you, I went in at least six, six playgrounds in the last three weeks and none of them, all real wood, you know, mulch, which surprises me because I've been in Red White, Aliceford, River Falls, the Holden School, and none of them have the engineered.
So.
Well, I think.
Yeah.
Can you hear me, Sarah, still?
Yeah, I can.
Are you going to meet with us on the next park and trail committee on the 21st of July?
Well, this, that's the other thing, like we were trying to get this project out to bid by next week. So if we want to delay that, we can certainly talk about it before then. I wanted to point out that the swings are about $15,600 total. Everything is associated with the swing set. So that would include all of the work, the installation and all of the components, equipment.
I would say that let's move ahead as you have it right now to get the bids. Once we get the bids in, maybe some of the part of the yellow, if we can afford it instead of, then we can pick and choose what we do with that. Does that make sense? I, I, so she knows my, what we're going to be discussing further. So that's all, Sarah. Thank you.
Okay.
So Sarah, what is the approximate cost of that engineered wood?
The difference between the wood and the surfacing. So the surface rubberized surface is about $25 a square foot. And the engineered wood fiber is, oh, it's a different unit. So that's not very helpful to you, is $25 a cubic yard. So.
From the engineer to regular wood mulch?
So, well, it's not necessarily, it's not ADA accessible if you don't use the engineered wood fiber.
Oh, okay.
So that's not really an option. Yeah.
And all the state parks do not have the engineered.
Yeah. I mean, it essentially just looks like mulch anyway, but it is special mulch. So that was really not, I mean, the engineered wood fiber is not expensive. It's the poured in place rubberized surfacing that is. So if you, let's see, for the two to five, for instance, the poured in place rubberized surfacing is like 13,250. You know, if that was the engineered wood fiber, it would be substantially less. So.
Any other questions on the board?
Sarah, I have two. How often does the engineered wood have to be top dressed?
I would say potentially every other year, sometimes every year, depending on use. The first install would be 15 inches. That would compress down to 12 over time. So you, you should be pretty good for a year or two on the initial installation. But it's naturally going to kind of get kicked around. Kids will play with it, throw it out. But that is an ongoing maintenance consideration.
With top dressing, if it's compressed to 12, is top dressing going to be another from four inches fluffy? Or is it six, eight, or what is that? How does that equate now?
I think it varies depending on location and the rate of decay and whatnot. And typically wants to compress. I don't think you're going to have to add as much, but I don't, you know, it could be four to six, or you know, it could be anywhere from two to six inches.
My last question for you, aside from the price, the higher prices, which I think were pretty, everyone has been exposed to that in some form in their life past few months. But where, where are we at in terms of product availability and acquisition? Once we get through the bid process and we were to place an order, you know, we're going on August here.
Yep, I'm sorry, got a tickle on my throat. I've been in touch with Camille and Camille has not brought to my attention any issues with procuring equipment. I didn't explicitly ask her that, but you, you can sometimes experience anywhere from like six to 12 weeks just to, you know, order and have the equipment shipped. But construction wouldn't have to wait to start until the equipment is in. Site work would go on ahead of it anyway. So I can get that answer in detail to you.
Anyone else have questions? Anyone else?
Is, is this our final plan now?
Final plan. This is what they're asking you to go to.
We'll be making, continuing to make, advance the construction drawings into next week. But it's, it's more or less just adding additional details so that the contractor knows how to build the improvements. So the layout is pretty much done, if that helps.
Anyone else? So we have on here that this is part of steps and bid progress. We have not made any bid progress because we haven't gotten to the bid. So what's been presented here with the package plus the two. And what is the date? If we go to bid, if we give you approval tonight, what's the date for letting the bids? And what's the date for it to come back?
So it would be advertised in next paper. So it would be out to bid officially next Thursday. And we would take bids. Right now we're looking at on or about August 5th.
Okay, so it'd be in time for our next meeting.
Correct.
All right. What does the board want to, yes, which newspaper will get out?
Well, it goes out in several. The official paper of record is the Hudson Star Observer. So it goes into that. It goes into the finance and commerce, and it also goes on Quest CDN, which is a bidding service. And it's huge exposure. All the contractors go to that.
So that we all come down to earth here. Our earlier education was the opening of the St. Clair Lucas August 14th, right?
Yes.
And then on here it says St. Clair River Crossing Grand Opening.
Should be a drop down.
Oh.
It's a typo. It should be.
I was just going to say, we need to.
No, it's two separate lines. It didn't break in there.
So I make a motion to go ahead with the bid package for the plans and specs of the new playground at the town hall and the two alternate packages.
Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. Any other discussion on this? And I think I have to agree with Sarah. It may be the right time and it may not. Last time when we did off the maintenance shed, it was far higher and we did it up the next time. We were the same way with parking lot reserve.
I think we owe it to ourselves to at least start with a bid.
Yeah, I think so. Yes. I think that's a good point. Yeah, any other discussion for us?
I, I can, I can say from an outside of the box thing, if any of these components are metal and coated, metal is 300 a ton today versus 30 this time last year.
Yeah. I know. Yes.
Can I ask a question on the rain garden?
Yes.
Do you want me to go for you?
I would prefer you did. Because then we have your name.
You got an engineer, right?
He's our engineer, Lee Man.
Richard Bailey, 588 Birch Lake Road. The garden, rain garden was kind of glossed over a little bit. You have stormwater going down into it.
Correct.
And is there a drawing on the, on the spec of it? Or is it just going to be a low area now and to be finished at a later date and with an overflow or?
Correct. So the rain garden right now is going to be excavated as part of the town hall parking lot project. That storm sewer pipe was put in with this project. So we wanted to get that at least excavated out.
You got to flare down into it.
Correct. And so we want to get that excavated out. It will be established with, with mats, you know, mats so that erosion will, will not occur. And then it will overflow and basically run over ground. You can see some contours just past, past the rain garden there where it will overflow into the wetland to the south.
Is the rain garden finished up around over the top? Or where is the stuff from the start of the rain garden per plan that you're bidding on?
So, so, so that's how it's shown on the, on the plan out there. Are you asking how does it, where is it out there?
What? No, what's the section? I mean, can you tell me what the section?
Oh, Sarah, can you remind me how deep it is?
Um, gosh, I want to say it's, it's 18 inches deep.
Yeah, I think I remember that too.
And then, and then the actual planting of the rain garden will be in the future as part of the finishing of the park.
So it's not part of the base bid. It's going to be a lawyer with cattails is what you're saying.
Well, the, the purse would want, wants to come in and finish that themselves.
We'll have, we're asking for a volunteer. We're going to put some flowers, some nice glasses, not cattails. So to make it beautiful, to make it as a nice part, some nice round holders, smaller holders, like to make it like a riverbed. And then when the water flows away, it will disappear slowly into the wetland.
I'm just saying that that should be the main feature because that is stormwater. You should take care of that. Versus, and no offense, but swing sets should come second. Take care of the stormwater and the natural stuff first.
Stormwater, that stormwater pond, just so you understand, is part of the bid by the contractor who's doing this lot.
Yep.
So he's actually digging that in and putting a rock into it so that the outlet is protected. Finishing touches, the park committee is doing the volunteers for projects. So I think it's going to turn out really nice and they have some great ideas. But to get it done, because this project is coming from up there, we needed to make sure that when it came down here, we're just not producing such red stuff.
Correct. No, I understand that, what it's trying to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Notification for you, what we want, Sandy will prepare everything to retain the water so we don't have any problems. And if it's a few months down the road, nothing will happen. It will be controlled. And then when we come in and put some plants and flowers and holders, then is when the beautiful part will come.
Nina promises it's going to be beautiful too.
It will be beautiful, of course. Anyhow, can I make a comment for Sarah?
Sure.
Are you still there, Sarah?
I am.
Okay. What I see, you have moved a little bit of the equipment from five to 12. I like this positioning much better. So that's good.
I thought you might, Nina. I made it work. I made it work.
The tall equipment should be more in the back so the parents can see the smaller kids nearby. Oola lau or titiola, that's what it's called. So I, I like it how it's positioned now. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes. So you're set to go to bid, Sarah.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. The St. Clair River Grand Crossing Grand Opening is set for August 14th. You know, most of it is being done by the city, you know, some of the city is still water primarily. So most of us will be going on over there. There is a bike thing, is it? I don't remember. I think there's a bike thing going on around it or something, but now people probably going to put other things.
Yeah, it is, it's, it is biking and I think they have four.
I wasn't, I wasn't listening. I'm talking about the St. Clair River Crossing celebration. No, I don't know. I don't think.
No, I was going to, I think I'm going to retract that. I believe it actually is run marathon, like a running.
Yeah.
And there's, there's four or five different routes or activities that are going to occur.
Okay. So that on the dockets, look on the St. Clair River's website, there will be information there. And then the purchase and installation of Rock and First Lake boat landing, unfortunately that recorded did not get out and I will take care of that too. Todd, this one, because we did approve that last time and that just got lost in the shuffle. I apologize for that. Would you give us an update on this porta potty situation and the jersey barriers and the insurance?
So we did end up with a single porta potty at Birch Lake Parking Lot. It is having to be a handicap one because that's what was available. The insurance, there's two layers of insurance and it's covered under our, our town policy. And there is also insurance available that's provided as a part of it from the vendor. Jersey barriers were one of the things that were discussed as an option for protecting it. And no action has been taken on that, that piece of it. And I'm sorry, but I don't have the cost of what those jersey barriers are for each available right this minute.
And one next year.
It does.
I see.
Okay. Okay. So there was an extra $15 charge for us to be covered. I want you to clarify that on the board.
If we were to be covered by their insurance in addition to our town insurance, it's an additional $15 a month charge. And that was not a part of the other motion. So therefore, at this time, we are not paying the $15.
How much is it costing us right now?
One, just a second, I can tell you.
While she's looking, is everyone in the board uncomfortable if we let our sheriffs go for the night? Is everything okay outside?
I think so. There's only several people left in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to say thank you for showing up tonight and helping us out. We really do appreciate it. You did a good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Like Sam proactive, they claim that they have switched out the ADA and put in a single stall, which the ADA only has a 40 gallon tank and the larger single stall one has an 80 gallon tank.
So what's our cost on that?
Trying to find the email that has that information.
Well, you want us to go on to something else and we'll come back?
I've got one more and it'll probably be easier. Yeah, I would say let's go on to the next.
Okay. We're going to go back up to the major road project on November 7th. The first thing is I'm getting on the rehab project in the parking lot. Lee, you're up.
Great. Right here. For our major road project for 2021, the workforce paving is complete on Willow River, Trout River Road in Island View. Tomorrow, they're planning on doing workforce paving on Blue River and Sundance. The contractor has also requested, you saw the email from the contractor. They would like to pave Awatuki on Saturday. The issue is if they don't get that done this week, they're going to be off on another state project for at least three weeks. So it would be three weeks before they'd be able to come back and finish that road. So the first thing I would like to ask the board is if the board is okay with them paving Awatuki on Saturday. And we would, you know, normal working hours are seven to seven. So we would suggest something along the lines of eight to five. That would please the board.
I'll make a motion to approve Monarch paving Awatuki between hours eight and five this Saturday.
Sorry.
So that was Teresa and Chris. Any other discussion regarding that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of that passes. And then you have a pay request here from the rehab project before we get to that. Does anyone have any questions regarding the votes that you mentioned that are in process? Okay, pay request. This is the one that says, pay request two.
Correct.
Or.
317, 317,549.67 cents.
Well, there it is. I'm going to pay this request. Sorry. Who wants to make a motion regarding that? This is Todd. Can you do it? I'll make a motion to approve Monarch paving company's request for payment two in the amount of 317,549.67 cents.
Chris Marshall, supervisor for second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes.
Okay. And so then the parking lot update, as folks can see, the curb and gutter is completed. The grading work continues through next week to do the fine grading. Paving the parking lot is not scheduled yet.
Well, that's disappointing.
We will, we will let the board know as soon as that is scheduled. It will be past three weeks.
I know. Anyone have any questions about the parking lot? The curb and gutter is impressive. And we'll have four and a half inches of asphalt put on it between the trucks. Anyone have any questions for him on that? Okay.
All right. 30th Street appears the change order is signed that you approved previously. The work is not scheduled at this time. Monarch is focused on finishing up existing work before tackling that, but it will get done this year. Motion's on that. Moving on to change order number three for this project. And we talked about this before, about the pavement mix design change resulting in a credit of 19,300. um, of 19,302 dollars and 25 cents. That would be a change order that we would need to approve. I know that, uh, Teresa has it in her hand. It didn't quite get on the Google Drive.
I handed it out to me, so it's one that's, it says July 2nd, 2021, up on the right hand corner, it's change order number three on the 2021 road rehab project. And it's a 19,000 dollar credit to us.
Yes.
Do you want to do a motion? I'll make a motion to approve change order, uh, change order number three to Monarch paving company in the amount of 19,302 dollars and 25 cents. It is a credit to the town. Second, Roger. Any other discussion on that one? All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Go on.
Alright, update on Perch Lake Road. Um, first work on Perch Lake Road is approximately 66% complete. Uh, they're looking to start spreading topsoil on the slopes. Um, all part next week, however, we have also gotten a request from Stout Construction. Be allowed to place topsoil on the slopes this Saturday as well. Um, so, um, again, we would recommend if that were to, uh, be allowed, you know, shortening up those hours by versus seven to seven. But while you're thinking about that, um, they will be installing culverts next week. Uh, the contractor is also going to be spraying water for dust mitigation tomorrow. There is some additional clear, uh, tree clearing today. Um, it was, uh, occurring due to some further, uh, thoughts by the public works committee. Um, and, uh, yeah, so that's, that's basically where we're at. Um, so we just need a ruling on whether or not they can do Saturday work.
Anyone want to make a, yes, sir?
No question about the tree plan. So, um, it's tree plan limited to just the area of road pavements and areas, or does it cover all of it?
So, for the most part, we've, we've taken trees that are, are being impacted, uh, by the construction. Um, other trees we've taken because, um, there's leaning over, possibly could fall on the road. Um, so it's been kind of a combination of those things. Um, so I guess if, if there's a concern or an issue, um, I would say give our inspector a call. Do you have the information from?
Yeah, one of my, all them, three months ago, I had your trees in the list and the road, take care of it.
Okay.
I didn't know if I had reminded somebody.
Okay, may, could you just state who you are and your address?
My name's Eric Petty.
Eric Petty.
Four eight seven Perch Lake Road.
Four eight seven Perch Lake Road. You just wanted to follow up and understand if the trees that you already talked about.
There's one tree in the right way that's ready to fall on the road. I didn't see.
Alright, well, I think Ryan is on. So, yeah, well, I'll touch base with Ryan and, um, I think we have, have the information to the record.
You have a pay request on Perch Lake Road?
We do. Uh, pay request is in the amount of 60,779 dollars and 13 cents.
So this is the first payment that we're making to stop.
Pay request one.
I'll make a, um, motion to approve pay request one to stout construction incorporated with an amount of 60,000 dollars, 779.13.
Second, Chris Marshall, supervisor four.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that passes.
Good. Do you want to go back and make the motion that they could work on Saturday?
Yes, we need that one too. Thank you for saying that.
Uh, Chris Marshall, supervisor four, I make the motion that stout construction can work on Saturday from eight to five. On Perch Lake Road.
Is there a second? There is a second.
Second, Colvin.
Colvin, second is, any other discussion?
Can we make it every Saturday or do they, do they just want this Saturday? I mean, we're gonna say yes to every set, to get it, the job done.
The board could choose to say that any Saturday that's requested is allowed up the board.
They don't have to wait.
Right. Do you want to amend your motion to say that?
I amend my motion. Chris Marshall, supervisor four. Stout construction is authorized to work from eight to five, uh, every Saturday till the project is complete.
Second, Colvin.
Okay. Anything else, anyone? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
And the change order.
And you have a change order, so I just wanted you to speak to that.
Yep, so again, this change order is for, uh, the pavement mix design change in the amount of deduct of 3,025 dollars.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve change order number two for, um, the Perch Lake Road project to stout construction. For credit to the town and the amount of 3,025 dollars.
Second, Chris Marshall, supervisor four.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, and it passes. Um, is there? Now we're going to go back to the speed study now that we have all this stuff. Thank you very much.
Um, so, man, I'm sure members of the board, as requested at the last board meeting, um, we have put together a scope and fee to conduct, uh, speed study for the purpose of determining if it's appropriate to modify the speed limits along Perch Lake Road between 60th Street and County Road E. Um, uh, not, just did not get on the Google Drive, it did get emailed to though, uh, recently. Um, if you want to take a look at it, but basically, our scope, um, includes all of the items that the states, requirements outline, um, including collecting the background information, uh, on the road, uh, traffic data collection, volume, speed, pedestrian movements, bicycle volumes, uh, and especially the lake and parking lot area. Um, analyzing the horizontal and vertical curves, reviewing crash data, uh, developing recommendations, and documenting those in a technical report with all of the results. Um, we also include a meeting, uh, with the town to discuss the results. Um, and then also, um, assuming that the recommendations, uh, warrant it or if applicable, we would submit that documentation to the state for concurrent. We talked to a gentleman at the state, um, and basically he said it's, you know, basically we submit it and they review it and, uh, there's not a whole lot of process after that unless they have questions, which typically, they said it's, uh, it's not usually a big process. Um, as we've talked before, uh, the study would need to be initiated after the construction, uh, Perch Lake Road is complete. Um, one of the other things that I would, uh, say would be part of this process is, when we get to the point where we're ready to kick this study off, I would strongly recommend that we have a neighborhood meeting, uh, with the residents, so we can talk about, um, you know, give some more background, some more information as to, um, how and why the state, uh, requires that we do what we do, uh, for this. Um, and, uh, you know, kick it off in that way, so that everybody has the same information. So the fee, uh, as we have calculated, you know, based on, uh, this is estimated to be 16,340 dollars, including expenses. Um, a couple of the things that this does not include that could end up being, uh, needed, uh, is development of an ordinance for legal adoption of the speed limit, again, if applicable. Um, a location plan for new signage, again, if, uh, um, any additional stakeholder meetings, um, beyond the ones that I've just talked. It also recommends monitoring the performance following any changes. Um, that would be something that the town would have to decide if and how they want to do that.
Right.
Um, so that's basically it in a nutshell. Um, certainly if the board, um, approves this, uh, we would, we very much look forward to, picking this off after the project and getting together with the residents and having those discussions and. Getting.
Right now, because the road is not, um, timed, it's 55 miles an hour. There is a 15 mile an hour sign along the lake, but otherwise it's 55 from end to end. Um, there's a possibility according to the DRC standard that you can lower it next to the park land to 15 miles an hour. Our ability to lower the whole road down to 15 miles an hour would probably not be possible. Um, it starts at County Road E, it goes to the, um, north and then turns and goes down around the lake and then it goes out to 60th and then out to I. Um, the two outer sections both, you know, the lake, the lake and the park are very close together and then you climb that hill. So there will have to be a change in speed limit there and we cannot, it used to be you could lower it for 10 miles an hour, but now we have to study to lower it in the amount. Um, so if we're going to lower that speed limit on that road, require us to do this study.
Can I add a question?
Just a minute, I'm just going to ask if the board has any questions before we go to public. Come on, Rick, I can tell you want to say something.
I'm. What's going to stop the people from Highland, Highland Hills from saying, hey, we want to study on our road to slow people down? What about the people on, uh, Troutbrook North that already want us to put stuff up on their eye?
Yep. I mean, you're exactly right. And we've had, we've had that request from others. And it is difficult to manage that. We have to do these studies, which is sort of the obligation to do. And I just want to let the board know, which I left public works on the other night, which Bob knew, is the state does come out here and inspect our roads every year. They inspect the signage on them, they inspect the condition there, and they inspect to see whether we're maintaining them. Because the state is getting a state aid for these roads, and they're looking at all of that. So it's not like they do this in the vacuum, we just change them for the best and then now we're calling up and saying, wait a minute. It has happened to us that we have had people, uh, the state calls up because, we have a development that we have the roads on, but the public, there's no one living there, so we didn't plow the whole coast. Or say, well, they're checking and they're asking, do you have those that you don't find? So, you know, that's a carry in statement. Anyone else from the board want to speak to this? We can have, if you want to, if you want to have some microphone, any of the issues go.
I'm Greg Ray and I'm five seventy one Perch Lake Road. And I took the liberty since our public works committee meeting Tuesday night, uh, called some state people. And including, I talked to a couple of them, including the traffic engineer. And, uh, I'm glad, Lee, you said something to the effect that, before you had said that you'd have to do the community. And I won't, I won't reference the amount of money you said back in that to me. But it is a case by case study with the upgrades of this project road, Perch Lake Road. There are, uh, the study would be based on roadway characteristics. Now I'll get to that, but I want to answer Rick's question about, Highland Hills or any other place, they don't have a lake, they don't have a park. They're all on this upgraded road project, which we've discussed before in detail, why we see a need for a study. And so, um, since it's based on roadway characteristics, and talking to both these state official people, they said due to the close proximity of the stop sign at 60th and being an, an entrance from the east, that should be included in the study. And Lee, I think you mentioned that, 60th to the lake. By not looking at road signs enough, there are two 15 mile an hour speed limit signs. One coming from the west off of E and then the second curve and the S curve. Then also where the road rehab stops, that existing asphalt along the road, the lake there, there's a 15 mile coming from the east there. So there, I don't think there's a need for that to be part of the study. Maybe that can be a deduct to your 16,000 some odd dollars. I study something that's already 15. That's wasting taxpayer money. We should study what is the principal besides the lake is part. And, and, and then because of the close proximity of the stop sign at 60th, they both agree that that should be in that study. So we can reduce the footprint of the study from the tar that's existing that's not being rehabbed where there is a 15 mile an hour sign, up and past the park entrance and up to the stop sign at 60th. So I, I guess, uh, I heard the resolution at the public works committee and I'm glad that's not brought up because it, it was three parts and then it went to something else. But I like what Lee suggested, from 60th, but to shorten that footprint, why study something that's already 15? It's not going to go higher, it's not going to go lower. So, uh, that, that's my feedback.
Lee, you want to speak? This is talking to me about the 15 mile, we're trying to find documentation that the DOT allows us to lower that speed limit. And so far, I haven't actually.
So that's one of the questions that's out there is, is where, what is the documentation for that 15 mile per speed limit that's there right now? What, what was, what was studied, what went into making that decision? So that's a question.
Yeah.
That's not answered yet.
I, I, I'm not personally concerned about it.
Yes, but we as a board have to be careful that we're doing things in the correct manner. Because if it's, if it was never approved by the DOT, then it shouldn't be there.
And it should be documented in your history, so there's.
That's right. We do have a chance to get it.
taxpayer money for that stuff.
I get that. Anyone else from the board want to speak to this? Time to change to do. If we that ran, pardon this, the one that wanted to go, but if we that ran, anyone wants to request this, that was not considered that.
Do we know how much it would be reduced if we just did that one section?
You have to do from E to the lake and then from the proximity park to I.
I think, sorry, the park to 60th?
Yeah.
I don't think you need to do 60th to I.
Well, this is up to the board. He's included everything.
I have not included from 60th to I.
Okay, I'm sorry, I understand.
That was not, that was not originally talked about. I know the public works committee talked about that, but.
But it needs to 60th.
What, what is the common sense of this, um, effect of possibility of continuing 15 miles an hour? 16 streets? If we find the documentation that it was okay at 15, why can't we continue?
So, so if we find documentation, then sure, I mean, if it's documented that 15 is okay, then there would be no reason not to continue with that.
I, I think your documentation is going to show that it was along the lake, you asked for the 15 mile per signs are.
Right.
But from a lake to 60th. The DOT allows you to lower the speed limit to 15 miles an hour in front of the park land. But beyond that to the east, we're going to have to determine what that number is going to be.
With the Wisconsin statewide speed management guidelines printed 2009 June, 15 mile an hour street or town road adjacent to a public park.
Right, but that's adjacent.
You gotta, you gotta get, get it out. All we're asking is, is, uh, does.
Well, the question was more on what adjacent means. I mean, Jason is there, right?
Well, and I, and again, I think, I think in this particular case, we probably have, um, a gray area as far as the park is concerned. Um, my understanding from the gentleman from the state that I talked to, said that, and, and he looked at, he looked at Perch Lake and he looked at the park. Um, and you know, in his quick initial look at it, you know, he said, well, the park's not really adjacent to the road, the park part. You know, there's an access. He said the intent of that speed limit was for, you know, typically more urban areas where you have a ball field or a park right next to a road. You know, a park, you know, playground, right next to the road. So there's, you know, there's a question about that and, and all I'm doing is quoting the guy at the state.
And who is that?
I want you all to wait. We're going to let the evening finish.
And so you look like you had a follow.
So I feel the common sense of this is if, if it's posted 15 miles an hour, we continue 15 miles an hour, up towards 60th Street. And then as a town, I want to be challenged later on. If, if the state has an issue with it, you show me, like with their education of what they have, 15 miles an hour adjacent to a park, there's a park there, there's terrain there. And I feel 15 miles an hour is what it should be, because we all are reasonable speed. And I don't mind having it posted and then having a deputy out there. And I don't mind having it posted and having a deputy out there to educate people.
Oh, you still have to do a study and already allow that.
I'm saying it's good to study, I, I want, I want the state to say something. It's already 15 miles an hour down there. What, what, what legal ramifications are we avoiding if we continue 15 miles an hour?
Well, I'm just going to throw this out there, number one, they can take our, rotate away for that mileage.
Okay.
Number two, you've got TRID funds on that, and I don't know how that works.
Well, we got two brilliant people here figuring it out.
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute. And that, that is a concept, you know, I think, number one, I, I have to get the objects next week and see if I can find paperwork on that 15 mile an hour, and see whether it's approved. But the bottom line is, you know, you're talking about posting speed limits on roads that you have, the DOT hasn't given you that authority to change those. And we have to be careful of that, especially on Perch Lake, I'm concerned, because that is TRID funding up there. That's a whole, whole money. And I have to look at that contract to see if there's any way that gets spelled voided. But we signed that a long time ago. I would, I would say we'd have to bring this back and talk about that.
Let's, let's bring it back.
Can you let me move here, Rick?
Can we add it to the cost of the Perch Lake project? The study?
Can we take it out of road funds?
Yeah.
We probably could, we probably could. But, you know, keep it running away, the road funds are going to come to Church Street.
That's okay.
Come on, we've got to get that done, it's been a time and effort. Okay, I'm going to take a couple very quick, I'm sorry, I'm going to give it back to him first, go ahead, quickly.
I brought my daughter today, just because gee, benefits from what you're talking about. Why can't I let our kids go on the road by themselves? Because multiple of the kids are walking and people coming around our corner before you go down to the park. Down to the landing, it'll run 55, 60 miles an hour. And last summer, I had a woman come buzzin' out of there, and she missed the curve at my driveway and, and crossed Perch Lake Road and put up a tree and a fence line. And totally were beating it. So I think start with a enforcement. I've never seen an Indian County deputy or officer down there kicking anybody who's seen. So I can leave my kids, because I don't let them go up there without being an adult. I've seen so many people walking that, that park, and their dogs bust, you know, their loved ones, someone's going to get hurt. And $16 an hour to do that, it's like that. So if there's a way to get onto the Church Street, let's figure it out, you know. And if we're hesitant, because it might expose some documentation that isn't there today, that to keep it posted, that they. I think the outcome would be is that, one, they can save for kids, and, you know. It's one of those roads that you shouldn't drive in the past again.
Yeah.
I have students before, and I'm just going to respond to Rick.
Just give your names.
John, I'm free, I live at 531 First Lake Road. This First Lake Road is much different than a lot of the adjacent adjoining roads in this area. There are hundreds of people out there, like Greg Ray stated earlier, that use that boat launch, that park, and are driving up and down, like my wife just stated, and he says, people are out there drinking. And we have kids and grandkids that, you know, are, I think jeopardized, especially by the fact that we've now improved the road. Increased the sightlines that is going to increase the speeds in that area. And, you know, I, I stated this to the planning, not the planning commission the other day, but the, one of the other commissions, Public Works, that. You know, we're here to get on the public record that you guys support, you know, putting a modest speed in that area to protect that community that lives in that area. I, you know, how many people live on Perch Lake Road in this area? Quite a few of us are here tonight, sat through a long meeting to get to this point, because we feel strongly about this.
Behind you, Nina.
She's going to head her hand up first. Hi, Tammy Trader, 538 First Lake Road. We've lived on First Lake Road 17 years, we raised two boys there. And for 17 years, I would not let my kids walk on that road. I would not let my kids bike on that road. I don't walk on that road, other than to, our driveway is right next to the park, and so I'll take the dog and quickly walk to the park. There is a ton of traffic because of that park, because of the lake. And it is a public safety issue, we're squabbling about $6,000. That's a heck of a lot cheaper than paying out a lawsuit for it. So I, I encourage you to please, please help get us to this point where we can get a little bit of safety out there, because it's been that way for a long time.
And I think even if you do.
You're going to have to wait.
Still have to get some of the force.
You're going to have to wait, Nina.
Yes, you know, I'm on the park committee, and we have installed the steps going down through the landing. So I don't live there, but we have seen how dangerous that turn is and how people go fast down. Then my question is, is there a possibility, what are the regulations to put a pedestrian crossing, a symbol that people are crossing there, that the people really, or a stop sign? So the people have to stop before they start zooming back at 55, 60 miles an hour. And when the road is new, improved now, they're going to be faster. So I, I totally agree with you guys, yeah.
And you want to have a second?
I just want to add that in the case study, there's nothing to say, because I asked about the adjacent to the park. Well, how far does that go? Because nobody could tell me that, that they said it would be handled in the case study. So there's nothing to say that the 15 wouldn't increase to 25, say, up to 60. There's nothing to say that that wouldn't happen. So they're going to do it on roadway characteristics, and there's a list of, of things like traffic, radar, speed check. Lee, you know, because you were, I asked for a referral of engineer people, and I talked to Dan, Traffic Engineer Dan Beaveritz. Yeah, is that the gentleman you talked to?
Yep.
I talked to him twice today.
We have some email correspondence as well.
Sure. So there's nothing to say in that case study, it doesn't have to be 15 to 60. It could be in that case study, they'll increase it to 25 to 60. But being that that's the, the entrance basically to the park and the lake, it shouldn't be part of that study.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
So I think it's going to be, you know, it'll be something new for us to learn how to do and fill out paperwork and Teresa, if you do have. Finding it, I'm sure it will take quite a bit of time, but if that's what we need to do. I do think that when you're sitting in, like the DOT, if you're going to sit and look at a map of the layout of Perch Lake and the roads around it. When you look at that road, I could see where you would think, well, how much traffic could there be on that? But really, the telling tale of it is going to be in pictures. When you look at that boat landing area and the way the parking, even how you access in and out of the parking lot, the vegetation. I really think that the overall picture when it's presented to DOT is going to be much, much clearer on why we come to them. With this request. And that's probably the only way we get the true answer to what the speed limit can be on that road. And then to come up with our baseline. I, I really don't see another way around it, because I think truthfully. It's a very different thing when you're standing there waiting, you know, just standing there, and the cars go by. That's my experience.
A place for people to go.
Do you have a road?
Um, yeah, 9555, Perch Lake Road. As far as the study, the county park provides the numbers of visitors to the park on a, you know, on a calendar year to help understand the traffic volume on that.
Yeah, that's, that's all research we can do, absolutely.
So does the board want to initiate a study? Do you want to do a Chris set statement? Do you want to wait a month while, I mean, if road's not done? Do you want to wait a month while I am digging the files to find out how that, if we have any documentation on that 15 mile per hour speed limit? Where do we want to go with this, make a decision?
Do you have to put together a document first to vote on?
I actually have it, and I did email it to you.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the drive, I mean, it's in.
I mean, it's there. I apologize, I had printer snafus today.
Okay, I'll get back to my inbox, my digital.
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
After the study, STANTEC turns that into the state of Wisconsin? Or you turn it into us?
So what will happen is, is we will do the study, we have a traffic engineer who will do all the analysis for this. Based on that analysis and based on the state guidelines and all those. Inputs that we use to determine, you know, what do we think is the appropriate speed limit? We'll put that in a report, and we'll present that to the board and to the residents at a town board meeting.
It does, doesn't have to go to another level.
Once we do that, then the board would need to concur or whatever with our study, and then we would then send that to the state for their concurrence. So just a clarification, the state's not going to tell us what the speed limit's going to be. We're going to tell them, we think this is what it should be based on this data. Please concur with this. So the state doesn't make this feeling.
And they can say, we don't agree with.
They could.
Do another study.
Or they could say, this is why we don't.
Did you rely heavily on the local government?
Right.
Right, right, we know that. So what does the board want to do here?
To make a motion, Chris Marshall, Supervisor Four, to move forward with the STANTEC proposal. Speed study for Perch Lake after construction is completed.
You have a second?
Do you rose your second?
Can we have a discussion by the board on this?
Yes, ma'am. Can I ask a question, Lee? How do you do the, this, the speed study? How often are they on a daily basis there? Are they once a week? How do they do that? Because there's some days, there's very little traffic. You go there on a rainy day, you'll be fine. You go on a 90 degrees when it's hot, you'll be proud of it.
So how's the development?
What the traffic engineer is going to, is going to do is he's going to pick days and try to make sure that he's getting a true picture of what is really happening out there. You know, one of the things, you know, that we're, a very large part of this is the speed study, the speed study part, the speed of the vehicles. You probably know, Mr. Ray, since you talked to Mr. Beaveritz, that the 85th percentile speed is a very large portion of the consideration. So one of the things you will not be getting from us is, we're not going to be letting, you know, by the way, our guy's going to be out there tomorrow. Not going to happen, you know. So we did, we really need to get as unbiased of information as we can, you know, so that, again, our study is valid, and the state will concur with what we come up with.
As we get to the end of this project, being substantially complete, we're at the end of summer. So that timing is really going to be a little obscure.
Well, that's, that's a challenge here with the timing that we have, that is correct.
So substantial completion, Perch Lake Road is the end of August. That's 95% complete, a little bit of desperation or whatever.
Assuming they don't get it done early, which is probably unlikely at this point.
The 18 to 20 weeks of summer, you know, is Memorial Day, Labor Day, and then it falls off a lot. And then the normal people can get back out on the road and go for a walk.
This motion that was made exactly just certain by the board did not have a time limit on it. Are you comfortable with going forward with it once completed as you stated in your motion? Or are you thinking about amending that? Is that a push it to next year?
I, I guess from the point of a great window, it would be next year, correct?
Correct. You get a true analysis.
Yes, sir.
And I asked this the other night, Teresa, sorry.
So that, so, so hold on here, so that we're clear as a board. Everybody here that's representing Perch Lake Road understands the relationship we just walked into. You're going to be dealing with speeders and lunatics for a short amount of time?
That's where I'm going right now, Chris. Okay, I asked Teresa if it's possible to get a temporary speed restriction.
We agreed to that, and that's on here.
Okay, I didn't see the temporary speed restriction portion.
Well, I asked, I asked, I asked that of William, that is not possible.
That's not allowable. Any change in speed limit has to be based on this study, and then conference by the state.
So, so we have to, we're, we're going to, we're going to have to move on, it's not a possibility, I've still got this much of this agenda left. Chris, do you want to amend your motion to leave it as a study for this year?
For next year.
Anybody else?
Over next year.
Over next year?
Not when the project's complete.
Motion was after the project.
Next year is after the project.
Please.
Do I get a fix time?
No. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. All right, thank you all for coming, I do appreciate it, thanks for hanging in, you're so long.
Ask for a little enforcement problem.
I will see what I can do about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. On Church Street.
Can I just say on my board taxes?
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, that's your, Porta Potty.
It's $175 a month flat rate year round. It's pumping one time per week, and they told me they were going to pump it on or about Thursday. In the event that we have a late down on weekends with all of the hot weather and. Paul would say that thing is a mess, and they need to pump it, it's another $35 for every pumping.
Can you guys take it off that, please? How do you answer a lot, $135 a month?
Dollars a month, and the other.
Why don't you afford the extra $15 a month on insurance? And so are you able to?
And I was just going to say also that there's no difference in the price between a 40 gallon handicap and an 80.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion on the insurance?
Supervisor Colby, I make a motion that we approve the $15 charge for insurance on the Porta Potty at Perch Lake Park.
You have a second?
I'm a second, Rick, because I would ask that that be amended, that if we're going to pay another $15 a month, we need some type of document that says that we have this additional coverage.
I thought you had that.
And, and I mean, there's, that, I'm going to ask, I would ask for that.
Yeah, I would expect that that would be what you would.
I just thought it was reasonable.
I'm assuming.
You've already authorized that $200.
Yeah, right.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes. You can provide them documentation by email if you want. Back on to the 20, the Church Street project.
All right, Church Street, the easement limits on Mr. Studer's property. We did go out and meet with him and watch that area with him. He seemed amiable to the location of it. We did talk a little bit about some of the trees that were being removed and some of his screening that would be going away. As we had talked at that meeting, we will look at adding a couple of trees here and there in order to mitigate that issue. We talked about even where those might, might be. So he seemed very amiable to all that. I, we have the easement description and exhibit is being worked on as we speak. It should be done either by tomorrow or early next week. I've already talked with the town attorney about getting an agreement together, so that is moving along. I think the goal, if I remember correctly, was to get all that signed, sealed, and delivered for the next board meeting in August, and so we're well on track for that. And that is basically the scoop on Church Street. And once we, once we have that in hand, we will be able to go back and continue the process with the county on the CUP. I also need to contact Stillwater to know that this is a next year project, not a next year project, so.
Our numbering got off here, the 2021 road project should have been bumped over.
Maintenance is sealed coat.
Yeah, maintenance is sealed coat, and when is, when are they starting?
If I remember correctly, early August, I think, is what Ryan told me. So it looks like he's typing, so if I'm wrong, you'll let me know here.
Any questions for him on those two Church Streets to make this project? All right. Moving out of the door, painting the ceiling of junk dirt on the outside of the building, I heard in front of the roof, I don't, I don't. I don't, I don't know if he's on or not. But yeah, this is Julie. I'm not, I'm not dealing with you people.
I can update on that.
You can update, go ahead.
For members, we did get a, from paint bonding, we got our inquiry that we received just last week asking for an update. Bruce did fill it out. He and I had a conversation. And I submitted that on our behalf with a statement that they have no intent to continue on the project. Project is incomplete and that we're going to have to move forward and we're waiting for response on that. That was submitted recently.
Sure, I'd like to get these doors done this year. Is the board okay if I go back to the gentleman that painted our two restrooms and have them bring in quote unquote? You're comfortable and ready to the next meeting? All right. That's where we're at on that one. Public Works. Kate and Bill, you're on Main Street in Holton.
Okay, I have information on that.
Yes.
So the, the situation in Holton is we have eighty-six feet of length on the southbound lane that is breaking up. To the north of that breakup, there's approximately a hundred fifty feet of rutting on the right wheel path. And to forty-six feet to the south, there's also rutting on the right wheel path, which basically is like a cupping. You know, it's, it's, it's settling in a bad way. So what we did is we, we took a look at putting together a cost estimate for what it would cost to take care of that whole southbound lane, remove it, reconstruct it, replace it. Because I think if, if we do just the, just the part that's cracking up in a couple of years, we're going to, we're not going to be happy with the rest of it. So that estimate right now is a twenty-one thousand five hundred. As I communicated with Teresa and I think at the Public Works Committee the other day, the state has said, you know, they have no recourse with the contractor at this point. So there's nothing that they can do to help account on this. And so we, we just, all we would look for tonight is just a consensus. Go ahead and, and work with the contractor and put a change order together and confirm what this price would be.
So verify this, the twenty-one five hundred is for the eighty-six foot part or for this whole thing?
All of it.
Is it one lane or half a lane?
It's one, it's one lane, so not the whole road, half the road.
But I thought Ryan said it was half a lane on the one lane. It is half, it's one lane.
It's one lane.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is a four-year-old road amount, maybe five at the most?
Full lane, half road.
I've done my own study and it's Todd's fault.
You can drive it backwards too many times.
We can't stop the semis going down there since golf camp. You know, about that, that's a brag about grass going through it.
But coming to this, that one section angle is really bad. And of course, the fact that it's covered in the other sections is not good. So do you want?
So why not wait until it all goes to hell and then just fix it?
Well, right now, the part that's breaking up is, is breaking up quickly and it, it's going to be bad.
I mean, you have the opportunity to put it on as a change order with a rehab contractor this year.
Oh, we do.
It's about two hundred and eighty-two feet long. So I mean, it, it's possible that this, this issue is, is localized to that point. I mean, we're not seeing it beyond that at this point. So I mean, it, like you say, there's ultimately, there's no ultimate guarantee.
So should we, are we in consensus to have to go forward and give a change order with a cost estimate on it?
Yeah.
Because this is, this is more of a estimate and I didn't have an actual cost estimate. All right, I say go ahead and see what comes back. That'll be on for August?
Yes.
Actually, on Bellevue Trail, I don't know who asked for the sign.
I.
Oh, 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 thank you. Thank you, Rick.
And I think, I don't, from what I heard from Ryan, that did not get discussed at the meeting on Tuesday, but the.
Bring it up.
Well, certainly, I mean, Todd's trying his best to patch those smaller holes, but if we add spray patching in there.
I think at the last board meeting, we actually talked about looking at when our, when our seal coat contractor comes in and looking at the flex patch option is probably probably better in that area. So that's on our radar to, to address.
Okay.
Would you agree, Todd? Yeah.
It's starting to be the same thing up here as we're part two, going up that back hill.
Oh, for goodness sakes.
It's not much you can add, anybody.
I know.
Can't patch the whole.
Right.
Three inches.
So here's to the twenty-third street drainage issue. I know that you can have a good time on the standing next.
Right. Ryan met with you, I think. Was it today or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yeah. So I think it sounds like between the two of you, you have a plan going forward to.
Yeah, we, I called in local aid yesterday and they're supposed to be done on Tuesday at ten thirty and we're going to revisit at that time to see where the local aids are and see what we can do.
Okay. Foxwoods Trail, do you have anything to add to that, Chris, attorney?
No, I sent, sent out a man to waste, waste management on that and I'm waiting to respond.
I'd like to see if we can, if the boards may have it, it's done this summer yet. You know, get that shoulder fixed. Perhaps we fixed it.
I think we've already fixed it.
We fixed it.
Trying to get the money.
There you go.
Yeah.
Well, Chris, attorney? Okay, put, put to this, let's come on.
There's a, there's some issues now.
Okay, well, see what you can do to give us some money. As you can tell, we need more money. The acquisition, acquisition for the land of the Hudson Truck of York on North, have we finished with that?
That's done.
All paperwork's been signed and.
And recorded.
Yes, yes, yes. I don't think there's any else for you, maybe you'd like to leave?
Yes, I could.
Good, yeah.
Graciously.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Okay, IT issues. Update on internet fiber and phone services for the town hall. Northwest is out here today plotting the lines.
Are you skipping that commission?
Huh?
Are you skipping that?
Oh, my God, I skipped right by you. Let me go back. Chapter sixty-eight of the application form is still on their table. They have not sent it back to us. And then the request of the planning commission to formulate an ordinance to address noise issues in New York. We've looked at this in the past, but we've gotten a lot of complaints on this recently and I'm asking the board to maybe have the planning commission take another look at it. Take a look at the surrounding noise ordinances and how they're handled. It's getting to be a more problem and it's not just one, I'm not saying it's not one individual, it's a whole lot of things. And I think, you know, there's changes that have been made in the town and there are people who expect something here and we go see that. The board want to do on this?
I don't want to do nothing. This is still the US. I think when people have issues, they walk across the street and talk to them to discover that there are people that are untouchable. And I really don't feel that we need to get all the legal ramifications of, of what is noise to some people, what isn't noise. And the same thing with being a nuisance. I'm a noisy nuisance person by trade. So I, I, I have a personal connection to the fact of what is noisy, what is it? Now, I can say that, well, here there again, rapid fire, well, the same person would say this is temporary for a dirt bike is temporary. I don't know, different than diesel generator screaming away twenty-four hours a day.
Anyone else on the way?
Been here before and it'll, it'll fill up the, boom again. Then we don't get anywhere because.
Or a farmer's mower screaming away all night.
Well, we don't need to talk about farm, farming, it's right in front of the law.
But it boils down to what Chris said. You have to go work it out, neighbor to neighbor.
And in some cases, that hasn't worked.
No, but.
A lot of the neighbors or a lot of the people are saying that there's no recourse to the insurance. And with no recourse, there's nothing they can do. They apply to the sheriff and the sheriff's act, as you don't have a noise ordinance, I can't do anything. And if you have people can't sleep at night, who can't use the outdoor of their, their land, for the reasons they want to have with it, with company or sitting on the deck and it's not possible because they can't hear each other's teeth. You know, you're, you're right. And I agree, Chris, that it would be nice if everyone could talk to each other, but not everyone could do that. So what is their recourse to be able to have the enjoyment of your home twice?
It's a, it's a very, very difficult situation, plus as a board and, and as a public. People are not approachable from either side, whether it's the supposed victim or the supposed producer. It's, it's. I look at it, it's a hot button topic. I don't know if that ones out here this time.
What do we want to do on this?
There was just fifty people here that said our job is to make roads for the town, keep them safe if their house is going to burn down and they didn't say, go police your neighbor or your business and tell them to be quiet. I don't know if that's, if we can do that.
Oh, absolutely. Other towns have workplaces for that. I mean, you look at us, the whole state, there's one, two. Jay?
Do you want? My opinion, guess who's going to have to enforce it? Okay, we went through this issue before. Being able to hear music, okay? Unless the decibel level violates standards within the law and there's state standards on that kind. What it would mean is at twelve thirty at night, somebody's going to call one E W and complain. They're going to call me. I'm going to get out of bed, go unplug the decibel equipment from a charger that has to be maintained, tested and recalibrated each time before its use. It costs as much as a fire that equipment. Then I'm going to drive out there and then I'm going to hold it up at certain distances from the source. And if they're in violation, because I detected X number of decibels within so much space distance, then I can go give them a ticket. And then you're going to pay for prosecution and the courts don't like these things. You can try and reinvent the wheel. But this issue has been taken up across the country and there is lots of case law that makes it extremely difficult to enforce, to get a conviction, to change the behavior and of the offender. And it has to be such that it affects everyone. So for example, if it's a bar that has an outdoor ban on occasion, well, are you going to go after everybody that has their kid's wedding in the backyard and violates the noise ordinance with equal energy and efficiency? It can try and do it, you may just want to say planning commission or if somebody review what is out there from the towns association, okay? And whatever. And it's also different in cities than it is in towns like ours where it's large areas. So if you live in a small, tight community, it's more enforceable than out here in the country. And Somerset has their effects, okay? That is seven miles as a crow flies north of my house. And if the air is cool, the temperature density is right, I can hear that music seven miles away. Now, even if Somerset had an ordinance, can you imagine the response I'm going to give? I'm going to say, that music is bothering me. Did you go run a decimal meter on it? And it's a big deal for them. But being able to perceive it and having it be a violation that you actually can in an economical way enforce all been possible. I welcome you to research it and see what's out there that works because I'm telling you, my experience, I only have twenty-two years and believe me, now that I served like capacity at Stillwater for those of you that don't know, and we beat that thing to death. We bought the equipment at great cost to satisfy the complainers. And you do the test, yeah, you can hear it, but it isn't even halfway to the danger level on the desk. Never did an enforcement. And unless you can quantify it, no judge is going to buy it or give a ticket. So for what it's worth, and the more rural you are, the tougher it is to get it done. Welcome you to research it, but I can tell you that any effort you put towards that accomplishing a noise ordinance is going to do nothing but frustrate you.
Right. I disagree. I just, I brought it forward to the board because the complaints I've received and they feel that they're not being listened to or helped on this matter and that's why they wanted it brought back. What does the board want to do?
Anton, do you have time to put together a review and study of it?
I think we do.
At least then you could say, well, refer to our study we just did.
You know, rather than just say a flat no right now. Well, I mean, what are we going to say to these people?
I'm, I'm for a flat no because I just listening last night with the plan commission, one of the, they were talking about town of Hudson and decibels. And one of the citizens said, and he deals with it every day, he said, well, the town of Hudson is sixty decibels. Sixty decibels is, that's the limit. That's regular conversation like right now. That's sixty. That's their limit.
I, you know, I understand that. I get that. But nobody on this board takes those calls at twelve thirty on a parking board. And, you know, I'm the one that takes them. I'm the one that has to say, sorry, there's nothing I can do. Because that's where we've been. And I think, I agree with Rick. I think we have the planning commission. Give us some solid information that we can pass on to these people. Because mine just saying on the phone all the time is sorry, sorry, sorry. And they're frustrated. And I mean, the emails have been pretty long about the fact that they lost value in their land and value in their house because they are being overwhelmed by and until you're living next door to that sort of thing, it's not good. It's not good. And everyone can say, well, there's noise around me. Well, it's not at one o'clock in the morning. And it doesn't go on for five hours in a crap. And it goes on every weekend. And one of the parties that contacted me, they're selling their house. And moving out of this town because no one's listening to it. I'd like to see that happen.
Need a motion or Anton got it or what?
The board can make a motion to send it to Anton for some information gathering.
Make a motion to do a case study on the noise ordinance for the township.
Is there a second?
Colby's second.
Do you want to include nuisances in that? Obviously, I have it on the agenda. Okay.
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed,赞成.
Aye.
Aye?
And if I were to make a comment.
Well, I just have to go back. Well, I just have to go back and say that the motion has been submitted to. Go ahead.
So Anton, I guess what I'm looking at is from, if it's in, when you do your study. What about time? Put a cap on the time.
Time in terms of when we bring it back or time?
Time of the producer, you know, do they?
Yeah.
And maybe we split the hair here with. They got, you know, the, the places that have events, they gotta have the events, but people will put a ceiling on it because they can't behave right.
Is there anyone here, I'm sorry, is there anyone here already have this agenda to move forward or are you just here to listen to us? Okay. We're going on to IT. Update on the fiber and phone services at the Town Hall, Northwest is out here. They were plotting a line hopefully in the next two weeks.
Hey, Teresa.
Yes, Justin.
Justin rejoined. So I spoke with Northwest Communications today. Hold on, one.
Come on back, Justin, you're muted.
Sorry, that was a, we have a little puppy who has decided that everything is exciting. So we talked to Northwest, I talked to Northwest Communications today. The earliest we might be able to get in is the 22nd. So we're coordinating with that. Dave is not sure because the turnaround time on the contract was a little bit longer than we had expected, but so we said, don't kill him if it's August 1st or, but he said he's, we're gonna follow footstep. Him and I are gonna have a weekly touch point on that.
Okay.
And so we'll need to, he just recommended that for the install, we have the electrician come out as soon as possible and have that installed. So just you, we can coordinate. It shouldn't, it's not a very big thing. For the phones, I have not heard back from Jessica yet on the contract updates, but as soon as I have those updates made, then it'll be to you for signature and for review and approval.
Anyone have any questions for Justin? All right, well, move on. I don't have anything on Sunday. And I have not finished moving everything out of the office. We have some issues with our security cameras as far as software backend thing. So now all of them are sending feeds to our computer. I don't know of any other IT issues right off the top of my head right now. But maybe, oh, it's out. Anything else they want to ask on IT? Otherwise, I'm going to update on the State Park parking lot on the Trafalgar Road. Got a request, Darla?
Yes, for the board to take a position, either up or down, because there's really no point in contacting them if we don't have a position from the board.
What's our position?
Our position is we haven't made a position. The position could be that we do not have that big parking lot on the Trafalgar Road south. Fifty car parking, right?
Yep, oh, okay.
Yeah, I suggested that they expand the parking lot at the top of the road. Which has plenty of expansion gate buildings that would be into the park and not in front of everybody's faces like this. And we need to take a, we need to place ourselves here on something. But finally, time here to make our wishes known and ask them to change the direction they're headed.
If we go to them, would we go forth with some type of offsetting mitigation suggestions of, you know, what we would like for them to, whether it be safety or lighting or hours that it's open, you know?
You can't control that at the state.
All right, so then our, okay.
I, I wish that this is a rustic road and that it should not have that volume of traffic coming in and out of it. Because a 50 car, he, he was very clear to me, 50 car lot is a 50 car lot, but they accept when you use the road for parking also. That'll require us to put no parking signs on it, but.
But I know they're talking, there are some excess ones we could use.
But there's a huge idea that this is gonna be set up for events. Off-road, fat tiger events, kind of like you see a cable. You're gonna have 500 people coming into this event.
Plus, they're gonna have to have some kind of wayside, you know, they're gonna have to have all that there.
I make a motion, Chris Marshall Supervisor four, that we take a position with the State Park that they utilize the River Road Park to expand their parking lot for their events and not drove through.
Second. Second. That was, that was Darla that seconded. Any other discussion?
We have that power to tell them they can't build a parking lot?
We don't have the power to tell them they can't.
It's highly recommended.
Highly recommended.
Oh, yeah.
Because after I heard what the intent is here. That's what's kind of bothersome because it's not just, you're gonna take your bike out there, you bike around the trails.
Well.
Because they're talking, what, 15 miles trail up the side of the park, I believe.
Oh, it's a lot. And 30 inches wide, so it's gonna be big.
And so they're talking about having fat tiger off-road events. Something in cheese. And if you look at that park, that off-road park zone, all of such, uh, pretty, that is, I don't know if you've ever been over there.
Oh, yeah.
Lot. And a lot of people bike too.
Yeah.
Which also bothered me a little bit. John Brooks, that's a tough one, and a lot of times. Now, I have some.
I, I think, I think as this develops, you'll still find yourself, it's a beautiful, bam, whack. They're gonna be, a bike to leave their car somewhere.
Oh, and they have good cars out there. And I see the nine park proportions lying sooner around later. Well, and I did tell this park superintendent, we're constructing it this summer. I said, you don't get to park on the road there. Better find some other place for these guys to go. So they have it right now entering from actual State Park entrance right now. But as soon as our road is done, we'll probably start.
Who will asset through the town though? The bike trail?
Not really. I don't see any, I don't see any asset at all. They've got, they've got another area where they can do the bike trails. Is that Nelson Farm?
Nelson Farm can have an expansion also, but it comes right up to the overall park. The U D park was a real turn by them to get up the trail.
I'm just saying the trails are cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, they could do it off of River Road though instead of Trafalgar. That's so crazy.
Okay.
We have a question. Take one a second. Do you want to take a vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Darla is the point person on this and you'll take this back to them?
So when may I expect a tight opposition tour?
Probably next week, maybe?
We get somebody hired.
This will be done as soon as you can. Okay, our company update, the money was, half of our money jumped into our account. And we did transfer it to the proper accounts and now it's just sitting. We still haven't gotten any final information from the state and then common period is still open. So as that evolves up to now.
Two hundred thousand?
That's two hundred some thousand, is it there? That's it. Catification ordinances that was sent off from our last meeting identity call from General Phone today. And they are doing 170, 168, 149, 81. All of those coming out shortly. So that is if it works. Twenty twenty audit was approached and signed off by me on Wednesday with any oil. And of course, you left. And that has been finished and the copies will be in your mailboxes, in your locker boxes here probably in the next couple of weeks. Soon as they get them out and sent, what happened? Okay? Anything else on that? And then we're coming down to the things that we have on the, on the office here. We have an appointment of an interim town clerk treasurer, specific duties. Do I skip 14? Arba funding? No?
I think you guys have an old agenda. Yeah, this one now let's put it up. That's an old.
No, we, we destroyed them.
Oh. I have one that I guess.
Yeah, Arba. Yeah, so I may just. I just told him, well, Rick spoke up. I just said it's in the main account. Okay, I missed it. Okay, yeah, so she was on the same page we are. She just, yeah, it's called Arba. All right, an appointment of interim town clerk treasurer, the compensation, do you want to make that motion? I'll make a motion to hire Vicky Shaw from the town of Hudson as our interim town clerk treasurer to work on Thursdays for a compensation of $30 an hour. And her duties will be specific to just the clerk duties regarding elections, signatory authority, and any other things that are traditionally need as far as public records because she will not be doing this for the town board. She will not be doing footbooks or borrowing money to the main accounts or doing transfers.
Second.
Any other discussion regarding that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Town Hall offices limitations and workload in the interim. We have signs on the door that the office is not closed until further notice. We will get the Nancy machine changed. I know Lori's gonna change our town website and do that. Deputy Clerk Treasurer is in place here 23rd. And she will be here only to do what she does, is train to do in footbooks and receiving of money. She will also pick up the mail and channel phone messages out to everyone. She will not be answering the door and she will not be answering the phone. She's so I don't have to, just clear to all of you what she's going to be doing and that is how much she will take out 23rd. In the interim, I will need to have a motion to allow me to hire someone to handle the footbooks, other things and to handle receiving of money until we get to a point where we are hiring somebody.
Chris Marshall Supervisor four, make a motion that we allow Teresa Johnson to operate the office with the footbooks and funds as she sees fit.
All right, is there a second?
You wrote your second.
So there any other discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm standing and that passed.
I sent you, I did find it. I want you all to know. I did find that document on our drive, fine. That I as a clerk, we have the clerk treasurer. So that's pretty proud of myself eventually. Doesn't happen too often on top of that.
Though it isn't. And that, that state and treasurer, the fact I'm staffed, it's a problem for me. And that might give us some stability, us outlay, uh, skill set, prior decision.
Can we just re-contact the former, I mean, I know we have to put the ad in, but can we just contact the ones that came in for interviews?
Sure. I mean, I'm not opposed to that, but I think in all fairness, we have to.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Might get us to where we want to be a little.
Okay. So we do have that listed there and I'm sure we'll pull that out. I will make a motion that we post this document for an ad for clerk treasurer, Teresa St. Johnson. In addition, contact those who are not offered the job.
Second, Chris Marshall Supervisor four.
Before we take a vote, if we get this in, um, indeed next week, do you want a two-week cutoff?
Yes.
A three-week, a two-week cutoff?
Yeah.
I don't see what, yeah.
I'll amend my motion to add that it will go into indeed and on our website. And it will have a two-week cutoff once it's published.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Anything else on the process to hire clerk personal time scheduled?
Special meeting, but we can do that in the meeting.
Would you just, would you just mail the document to me because I can't open the Google share? So if, just download it.
If you go on the Google Drive and go add for, A D, space, F O R, you search, it'll come right up.
A D, space.
F O R, add for. It searches, it'll come right up.
My Jordan does.
It's wonderful how technology works. Okay, I have a new public records request update. Can you, like, does that please?
Uh, yes. Yes, I believe there are a couple active.
There's seven.
Seven, okay, I thought there were three, so maybe there are even more. Public records requests that have been received in the last, I would say seven to 10 days. Perhaps for a period of two weeks that need to be responded to. They haven't been responded to yet. Present that to go through, records assemble them and respond to them. So it's, it's just an issue that's gonna have to be addressed. The statute does provide a time period in which you have to respond to these issues as soon as practicable and without delay. The State Department of Justice's policy is 10 working days, generally just constant. Delay is considered to be reasonable, but again, we don't have anybody policing now, so here are how we're gonna respond.
So can I ask you a question? Is that, when these public records requests come in and say the documentation was compiled, then do you go through it to adapt? Because there's certain items that should never be given to these requesters, even by ordinance.
Correct. I would typically work with and consult the town clerk to remove anything that would be privileged or that was seen as verified information, things like.
So if any of us receive a public records request, it should go to the clerk's email so you can be aware of it before anyone replies.
Typically, all public records requests go to.
Yes. And we should have your file corrected.
All public records.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do. What about custodian of your personal records? Since we're custodian of our personal records.
If somebody requests your records from you, I think that's a fine response just in in the sake of being comprehensive, I think that would be something that you should be aware of and consistent at request.
Yes, 4:30, if you did have, but I would ensure to keep a second request. For their records.
For their records. I'm gonna try and forward it to you.
When you're talking personal, you're talking for town email or your personal? Personal. Right. Or you have a question?
Maybe after what happened tonight, they would withdraw their records requests? Can you ask them? Are you sure you want this?
No, we have to.
You have to do it.
I mean, there's some really intensive.
Yes, some of them are fairly huge.
Yours is, it's gonna cost us some money, but.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe there's.
For what?
Ask for, that's a jail.
Right.
Because another one has a whole list of. Any documents. Emails. Copy to given. Yes, sir.
Can I ask, are we charging for records?
Chris, what is the charge for requests, ask for?
Uh, there can be a charge for time on records, but I don't know what are that.
So. So these record requests, do they come to supervisor four? Do they ask me or do they ask the town?
They can be both.
Yeah, typically they go to the town. Yeah, and, and that's also why they typically go to the town and aggregate all the information.
Learning.
Yeah.
I'd rather do this.
There might, might not have to spend too much time searching.
I'm just saying. Oh, there's another great thing. So. Enough track for a second, but I responded to a person that was had an issue with her employee. I, I decided. Usually I ignore all of them. Okay, this, this because I don't like conflict. So I decide to be receptive. Wrong thing to do that. So. What is the standard procedure for when people wanna complain? Do you respond or?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I do.
Because I'm like, oh.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I respond. I days and I work elsewhere.
Basically, I'm responding to you. Mostly to phone calls, but I do respond if I can.
I'd say that on copy of that is if you're responding to a personal email that comes a town record.
That becomes a town record and they're, they're, they're beautiful to search.
And, and right, this, so I'm learning here on the fact that I, I don't really like controversy and engaging with you being upset, you know. And, you know, so I decided to learn something on, okay, how much of this stuff to filter out. You know, you know, jump over to the lady that's invited me to her back porch to listen to the band.
I know.
Now they don't have it right here.
I'll make sure to get your phone app next session. I'll be nice. Anything else on public records that anyone wants to comment or ask questions about? That, this, that, this, this. Um, your request will keep happening and I'll try and organize and do the Vicky Shaw and see if we can start stacking of that.
Yeah, we need to straighten something.
Okay.
Like they, they think the town should consider setting a policy for whether we do charge for response on basis of time or basis of paper.
We do have something somewhere. I just have to find it.
Okay.
Okay, on, on to, um, excuse me. Resolution 2018-10 to be current attorney contract terms. We are under resolution for guideline implementations of criteria expenditures for people services. This resolution was put in place. Twenty eighteen dash ten. It's been revised a few times, like since 2011, 2016. So it's not anything that is new to us. It's been there and I guess, Darlene, you pointed this on the agenda.
Well, the reason was is that we are no longer on an hourly contract with our attorney. So that would need to be changed. And I was wondering how it would affect the contract if we would allow, allow board of supervisors to contact the attorney. And interestingly enough, the WTA in their July 2021 magazine, they, they encourage speaking to our attorney. It says, let us know. They're, they say, contact us, but because your attorney may be aware of certain facts that we are not aware of. They want, they wanna find out if they're maybe wrong or don't have all the information. But it says, remember, it is your town attorney that must represent your town and defend the board's actions. The association is not your attorney and we cannot go to court on your behalf. It is important that the town and its attorney be on the same page. So I guess what's the hierarchy? Do we go to WTA first or should we go to the town attorney?
I always go to WTA. I always do that.
But it sounds like they don't have the final, how are we gonna know if they differ with the attorney?
Well, let me back up. I go to the towns, I go to Wisconsin Town Association website and to their attorneys. Basic questions that are already somewhat on their website. And I will ask the things like, can you have a deputy clerk about a clerk? The answer is no. Can you have a deputy clerk as a contractor? The answer is no. Now, I can ask that of Chris and it would probably take him more time to figure that out. Where I can talk to Carolyn Milwaukee down at WTA and she's gonna go, no, this, yes, no, this, whatever. So you get some of those basic questions answered in a very quick fashion. But what they're trying to say to us is they're not gonna represent us on matters in our county. But they're there to give us oversight and information on how to run open meetings, public records. All that content law that the WTA helps us.
I understand that, but I, I'm thinking of things that are more specific to our town, like right now, we have to go through you to get permission to contact the attorney.
Right.
Unless it has to do with the chair. I, I just think it would be very good if we could go to the WTA first and then maybe to Chris. But that may be not what he expected. Chris, were you even aware of this resolution?
Uh, no, I, uh, the first time I saw the petition, I didn't think.
Okay. Would that have affected your, your contract at all in any way?
I don't know that it necessarily would have. I could, I could give you a little bit of background of how I typically work and make it advocate helpful. Most of my communications are typically with the clerk. And I work on, on matters that are, you know, obviously that's difficult right now, but and I work on matters and directed to by the board. So if you tell me in a meeting to, you know, look into something, I do. And if the clerk asks me to look into something or have some sort of contact, I do. And but typically, most of my communications are either with the clerk or with, or then based on this resolution, I have. The chair down. That's typically how I work and I don't often have a lot of contact with individual board members post my.
As far as I'm concerned, I look at it as a chain of command. We don't need it.
One of the reasons this started back in the day.
Are we gonna get in that deep of issues by ourselves and without contact? We should all be transparent.
And part of what this started out at is that the attorney was concerned that supervisor one, supervisor two, supervisor three, supervisor four, the chair, the clerk are all calling attorney about if there's anything.
Yeah, see?
And many times, and I've said this to Chris a few times already, many times with Catherine, if there was an issue that came up, I would say, would you please send an email to the board? And then the board is all where? What's going on? President, everybody, what's happening, what's happening? They don't have, you know, a lot of people calling about there's anything. These various. Our attorney was trying to stay on task and. Yeah.
Chain, am I up?
Well, that's, that was my other question though, that hierarchically, we are the same. We are on the same layup level as the chair except for her statutory duties and, and a few other, conducting a meeting, things like that. But as far as, as far as that, we are equal.
Where are you gonna go on this? I, I, I don't think it's unworkable the way it is. I don't, we're past some of this conflict, but it gets easier. She has. So if this, no, this. You know, I really have value in your, in finding people and asking the same question.
Nonetheless, it is, it is a statutory thing too, that we are the same, except for the few delegated duties. And that's, that's just something I learned, you know, I didn't know that until I took the conference, so.
Right, and the board can make decisions as to judge what. Which the board didn't on this resolution. And I, it's been revised multiple times. The board's made that decision.
Well, I know it's gonna.
It's got to be engineered. There's, there's a resolution engineered to.
It's gotta be revised to match the contract rate or the monthly rate instead of the hourly, correct?
Uh, it, it, it can certainly be updated. Absolutely.
I make a motion to Chris Marshall, supervisor four, to leave the 2018-10 current contract till attorney contract comes up.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Supervisor Colby, seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those. Um, it was a four to one vote and a motion to carry. Next thing on here is a policy regarding support document, supporting document availability. Have you asked?
Yeah, I just, I think it's something that needs to be followed, that the board of, the board should be, first of all, given the courtesy, at least, uh, something major that is going on, such as the security issue that we had in that uh, we had to find, the board had to find out through a forwarded email that security was retained. And it kind of ties into the supporting document availability. I think things like resolutions or some other documents, we can hash it out as to which ones can't be done in a timely manner. But I think it's important that we and the public gets to see these, these documents ahead of time. Like, uh, we got our minutes tonight pretty early, but usually we don't get those until we kind of walk in the doors, so no one's really got a chance to look at it. So I, I, I hear the complaints of the public on both sides and I, I agree with them. We should really work on hyperlinks, jump links, whatever it takes on the agenda to get that document available to the public and, and to the board when it is in the Google Drive and, and pretty much subject to open records.
Well, it's also to tell me the records. I can dispute that. I just think that sometimes that can be very unmanageable. I'll change our agenda to 24 hours in advance. If you have an emergency, you can just make solutions for that.
I know you can do that. You can say that right on the top, revised date and time. And then you say what was revised, but I, I do think transparency is something we can work on.
And I don't disagree with the transparency. We've got to spend some time to check that. And this last month, that's a difficult thing. So I will definitely see that, try to do better, but I will tell you it's not.
Okay with that.
Anything else on that? Excel lights. Excel has contacted us regarding. Sorry.
Oh, me over there?
Yes, the one that's out that they wanna replace with an LED.
Oh. I don't have any answers.
One and holds it that has not been replaced.
Okay.
They want to replace it with an LED. Or comfortable.
Yeah.
Or a glass.
I make a motion, Chris Marshall, supervisor four, to give clearance to Excel energy to replace the light.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carried. And we're on Seventh Street racing issues. Todd, you're up.
Where's Seventh Street?
They crashed my house.
Dr. Park.
That is cool. Okay.
Well, there was supposed to be a couple of people here, but because it's like, they're all, they wasn't leaving, but so if you wanna take a look, you can or.
Is that a quarter mile?
Oh, perfect.
It's a racetrack every weekend, starting Friday night, up and down the highway, up and down Seventh Street. Beyond.
I'm messing up.
Yeah, it explains everything. They've been doing that since they dead-ended that road up there or they changed it.
It's just kidding, you know, we've dealt with it for what, a couple of years now and it's just getting worse, worse and worse. Uh, Paul West has a bunch of kids up here this far. Uh, he's talking to the sheriff, wanting to play them with Sydney R there and Radar and. It's never happened.
Okay.
Never happens, so.
Do you wanna take a center advisement to office, D? So you all have a chance to go take a look what goes on up there. What are the primary nights?
It's bright, made out of five sets.
There you go.
Some guy, it's Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, Saturday night, Sundays. But it's, it's all sporadic, so there's never no real sign when they show up.
Well, they don't worry, they're communicating.
They, they, a lot of times it's break up. They do it by themselves, just one car. Does it tune up on the car, rips down to the end of the road, stops, turns around, guns aside.
Yeah.
But I, I'm, uh, people.
No.
Those are.
Oh, those are people. Thank you.
In the storage units there in the garage.
Fly into their storage unit and shut the door and.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna take a second agenda. All right, we're gonna pay chess. You have two registers and I will tell you why. Is because this register with the $14,000 checkout was from Schmidt Sons who apologized, but they did all of our travel hauling and traveling. Forgot to send us a bill. This is bill back, so I will make a motion to approve checks. Um, starting on 6/11/2021, check number 22438 through today and that last check number is 22525 plus the one on the second sheet for 22526, and then it was a fund transfer resulting in eight.
Second, Chris Marshall, supervisor four.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and then we have approval of town board minutes.
I make a motion to approve the town board minutes for June 10th, June 22nd, June 29th.
Um, all those in favor, is it a second? Second, okay. Second, okay.
I've, I've got two changes.
Um, you're gonna have this microphone so Liz can hear you.
Liz, on June tenth, twenty-one, six P M, on page six to seven. I didn't read the email from the attorney. The attorney read the email. And then on the future agenda items, it wasn't a question about citizen comments of Roberts rules. I wanted a policy on board document availability.
Okay, um, are we gonna approve that with those changes? Okay with that, Chris?
Second.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, composed and concise. And then you have budgets and invoices and bank balances were included. Um, you have how the roster's there and the, um, transaction detailing report date. And on this one clipboard was outstanding. And then these are what's going on in those, and damage caused. So that's a good clipboard that I dropped. Anyone have any questions? Anything on for the next board meeting?
I have one, uh, uh, to look at the procedure for having a referendum on the Second Amendment sanctuary resolution.
So what are you asking?
What does it take to even get it on the ballot? I don't even know.
Oh, you don't have the, okay, you see website.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah, and I will get your cost.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, just to do those.
Okay.
Um, anything else, Megan? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for being here. It's a long meeting, but we got through it.
Back then.
I appreciate it. Okay, wait, Chris, Chris.